Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now we will move on to item two, which is our acknowledgement. We recognize that we are presently on the lands of the Chachino, M'Kwikma, Karkin, Aloney peoples, and acknowledge them as the first inhabitants of the land we currently occupy. I would like to welcome everyone to the February 3rd special meeting study session of the Board of Education. This is the second study session in a series of meetings where we are being informed on COVID-19 and schools. The purpose of this meeting, as was the first meeting, is to inform the Board and the community at large so we can make informed decisions as we move forward. The mission of the West Contra Costa Unified School District is to prepare students for post-secondary education and to be responsible, thinking, contributing members of our global society. We believe in public education as the most important function in a democratic society. We believe we must, one, treat everyone with courtesy, dignity, and respect; two, provide safe and nurturing environments in which to learn, teach, work, and participate; three, serve our students by working as partners with our community to develop well-rounded lifelong learners and contributing members of a global society; four, take responsibility for our behavior and performance to ensure the highest possible achievement of all students, employees, and our school community; five, provide equitable and essential communication and support for successful learning, teaching, working, and participating; six, respect, celebrate, and welcome the diversity, uniqueness, and contributions of all members of our school community. The Board should not subordinate the education of children and youth to any partisan principle, group interest, or the members' own personal interests. Tonight, this meeting will provide public comment opportunities through the Zoom app or by telephone. To indicate your desire to speak on an agenda item, raise your hand by clicking on the appropriate icon in the Zoom app or by pressing star nine, emphasizing the meeting by phone. In order to be recognized to speak, your hand must be raised before a public comment begins for the item. Due to Brown Act, due to the Brown Act, Board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. If you do need translation for this meeting, it is available to you. Please click on the globe icon at the bottom of your screen and select the language that you need. With that, Mr. Duffy, will you please do the roll call?
Or President Phillips?
Here.
Trustee and Clerk Smith Folds?
Present.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Present.
Trustee Christian?
Present.
Trustee Reckler?
Good evening, present.
All present.
Thank you so much, Mr. Duffy. We will now move on to item B1, COVID-19 and Schools. That is our only item tonight. I will begin by reading the bios of the individuals who will be presenting to us first. This is an expert group that is associated with Harvard, New America Brown, and some other great institutions. The first person I will read to you about tonight is Ms. Elena Silva. Elena Silva is Director of Pre-K 12 for the Education Policy Program at New America. Her research and writing focus on a wide range of educational issues, including teachers' work, school design and improvement, and the assessment and measurement of student learning. Prior to joining New America, she was a Senior Associate for the Carnegie Foundation for the Advancement of Teaching, a Senior Policy Analyst at Education Sector, and the Director of Research for the Educational Foundation and Library of the American Association of University Women. She previously managed youth leadership programs for the DC-based Aspira Association, one of the largest national Hispanic-serving organizations, where she developed and directed one of the first AmeriCorps service programs in the nation. Silva holds a Master's Degree and a PhD in Education from the University of California, Berkeley, where she taught undergraduate courses in education policy, high school reform, and the history of public education. She holds a Bachelor's Degree in Sociology and Anthropology from the University of Massachusetts Amherst. She lives in her hometown of Silver Spring, Maryland with her husband and children. The second person that I will introduce, and they're all presenting together, is Dr. Thomas Tsai. He is a surgeon and health policy researcher in the Department of Surgery at Brigham and Women's Hospital and in the Department of Health Policy and Management at Harvard TH Chan School of Public Health. He is on the faculty and collaborates with colleagues at the Center for Surgery and Public Health, Aridine Labs, and the Harvard Global Health Institute. His research focuses on understanding the impact of health policy efforts on achieving value in our healthcare system by reducing spending and improving outcomes. Using national Medicare claims data, his work has examined the relationship between hospital quality and readmissions, patient experience as a measure of quality, and racial and socioeconomic disparities in readmission rates. From 2014 to 2015, he served as a Senior Advisor to the Assistant Secretary for Planning and Evaluation in the Office of Health Policy at the US Department of Health and Human Services. He currently serves as the Vice Chair of the Council on Graduate Medical Education and is actively engaged in advising federal policies on the physician workforce, graduate medical education, and rural-urban disparities in medical care. His recent focus is on achieving value in the Medicare system with projects focused on bundled payments and variations and utilization of post-acute care. And last but not least, I would like to introduce Dr. Joseph Allen. He is an Associate Professor. He is Director at the Harvard Healthy Buildings Program. He is co-director of the Public Health for Business Leadership. He is the Deputy Director of the Harvard Education and Research Center for Occupational Safety and Health. He is co-author of Healthy Beginnings. He is a Commissioner with the Lancet COVID-19 Commission. He is the Chair of the Lancet COVID-19 Commission Task Force on Safe Work, Safe Schools, and Safe Travel. Joseph G. Allen is Director of the Healthy Buildings Program and an Associate Professor at Harvard's TH Chan School of Public Health. Before joining the faculty at Harvard, he spent several years in the private sector, leading teams of scientists and engineers to investigate and resolve hundreds of indoor environmental quality issues, including sick buildings, cancer clusters, and biological/chemical hazards. His academic research focuses on the critical role the indoor-built environment plays in our overall health. One of the world's leading experts on healthy buildings, Dr. Allen is a regular keynote speaker and advises leading global companies. So with that, I would like to have all of you join me in welcoming Doctors Allen, Tsai, and Silva to our community. And with that, we need to give one of them screen sharing functions. Dr. Tsai, is that you?
Yes, and I think I have it, and I will. Can you guys see my screen?
Yes, sir.
Right, first, I wanted to thank Mr. Phillips and the Board of the West Contra Costa County School District for the invitation to join the board meeting today here, along with my colleagues, Dr. Allen and Dr. Silva. And as Mr. Phillips' introduction may have mentioned, like many others, you know, my background pre-pandemic was in other fields, and mine was in really studying the impact of health policy and health reform on our US healthcare system. But as many others have over the past year, you know, have retooled as a senior fellow, the Harvard Global Health Institute, to really collaborate with colleagues across academia, across foundations, nonprofits, and think tanks to really think about how we can bring actionable data to inform equitable policymaking and to bring about pandemic resilience. And this is work that's collaborative across the Harvard Global Health Institute, New America Foundation, the Harvard Chan School of Public Health, the Evan Safras Center for Ethics, and the Brown School of Public Health. So it really is a privilege to be here. I was a medical student at Stanford, so the Bay Area is near and dear to my heart. I'll take a few minutes to describe a little bit of the history of our pandemic resilience guidance for schools, which has now two sets of guidances, an initial set in July and the more recent guidance in December. It will cover the initial July guidance, as well as reviewing some of the epidemiologic and contact tracing data that's really helped us update the recommendations from thinking solely on community-level risk to really shifting the focus about how we can move towards a model of infection control to break the chain of transmissions and minimize risk in schools. Really, how do we create the conditions for safe teaching for teachers and safe and effective learning for students? So that's really our main motivation over this time was really to think about how do we bring the data to bear, recognizing the critical role that in-person education has for our children and our communities. In context, in July, when we were embarking on this work, it was around the time of states creating their reopening plans. And a lot of discussion around schools was one, some ways, secondary to the initial concerns around reopening the economy. It was also very binary about keeping schools closed, virtual, and not a lot of nuance. And we set about this goal to really examine the evidence, create a set of definitions around community-level risk, but more importantly, bring that connection between the community-level risk to what it means in terms of prioritizing schools. So not viewing K-12 as a monolithic entity, but really thinking about how do we think about the community-level risk in terms of our priorities for elementary school students versus middle school students versus high school students, weighing the benefits of in-person learning for our younger students versus the ability for older students to engage in virtual learning, but also weighing the potential risk of transmission, especially among older students versus the younger students. So these data are available through globalepidemics.org. And in this collaborative effort with multiple stakeholders across education, epidemiology, public health, we created this framework that linked the risk levels, broken down by the number of new cases per 100,000 into categories of green, yellow, orange, and red. And then the strategy in terms of prioritizing pandemic resilient teaching and learning, which we can see on the right screen. And the goal of this guidance, as we move from green, yellow, orange, and red, is to try to prioritize in-person education for our elementary school students as much as possible and middle school students, but also recognizing that there was a high level of community risk. In context, this was also, you know, it's, we're a year into the pandemic now, and it's, you know, hard to, you know, remember how far we've come. But in, you know, May-June, when we were developing this guidance, it was still in the early days of pandemic, and contact tracing efforts were just starting to begin across states in the US. And we did not have the detailed epidemiological data to inform what the level of risk was. So the guiding principle was this, was to take the best data that we had at the time, which was community-level transmission, and link it to different priorities for school opening. However, since that time, as contact tracing efforts have become more robust across the United States and as data have emerged and published in peer-reviewed literature, there's a growing awareness that there is a reduced risk of transmission of COVID-19, what we call secondary transmission, meaning transmissions that actually happen in school and not just from the community. And these next two slides break down some of the data for child infections, meaning student infections, as well as teacher infections. I'll just highlight a few studies. I will send the slides to Mr. Phillips, and we can share this with the school board. And again, a lot of these data and literature are also available through our website at globalepidemics.org. But I want to focus on this last row here, which is a recent study that was published in the Journal of Pediatrics. And using very detailed contact tracing data in North Carolina, they tracked 90,000 students and staff across North Carolina. And what they found was that over the study period, they only reported 32 in-school cases. And that's compared to 773 community-acquired cases. So a much lower rate of in-school transmission compared to transmissions that are happening outside of school in the overall community. And most importantly, what the study found was that there was no evidence among these 90,000 students and staff of child and adult transmissions. It's important to also mention that this didn't happen sort of in a vacuum, that this was part of a very concerted infection control collaboration between Duke University's physicians and public health experts to work closely with the school districts to develop these infection control strategies that created the conditions for safe teaching and safe learning for the students. What about adults, so teachers and staff in schools? I'll highlight the third row here, which is a CDC contact tracing study from CDC's publication, The Morbidity and Mortality Weekly Reports. And this focused on a rural county in Wisconsin, Wood County, and 17 schools in that rural school district. And this study period was in the fall and early winter. So keep in mind, this was the time point of the pandemic. It's hard to keep track of sort of the multiple waves and peaks, but this was a time point where we're seeing outbreaks spreading across the Upper Midwest. So this was a point where Wisconsin had very high levels of community-level transmission. The school district in Wood County, Wisconsin, was able to implement very effective infection control strategies. And as an example of that, they were able to have 92% mask compliance within the schools. What they found, similar to the study in North Carolina, was that the rates in both students and staff were much lower than the surrounding community. Just for context, the community rates during that time point was about 5,500 cases per 100,000, compared to 3,400, 3,500 cases per 100,000 documented in schools. But majority of those documented cases in schools were actually infections from the community. So meaning students or teachers having a household exposure or a social exposure outside of schools and then being diagnosed or the case of being picked up during the school. And in fact, only seven of the cases were linked to in-school transmission, and they're all from students and not from teachers. Again, there is now a much larger, growing body of data about the reduced risk of in-school secondary transmission relative to the overall risk in the larger community. We've heard a lot about Sweden and the, you know, the different approach there. That second row in this slide examines specifically the school experience in Sweden, which during this study period did not have strict mask-wearing, but had encouraged social distancing. And what they found across 2 million students and 100,000 teachers were that there were no deaths and very low rates of hospitalizations and much lower rates in teachers than compared to other categories of workers during that time period in a point where Sweden's economy was relatively open compared to the rest of Europe and the rest of the United States. So the growing body of epidemiology and contact tracing data had started to make us rethink about relying only on community-level risk alone. And as a surgeon, you know, I work in the hospital, you know, during COVID. And what we found that was the very low rates in sort of the highest-risk setting among the highest-risk individuals of in-hospital secondary transmission of COVID-19. And part of that is a concept of universal precautions, is it's a widespread culture that includes masking, personal hygiene, screeners, social distancing, attestation of symptoms, and that this everyday behavior of individuals served as a foundation of a very effective infection control that allowed hospitals and healthcare workers like myself to continue to provide care in the highest-risk settings, but still do it in a safe and effective way. And in my hospital, at Brigham and Women's Hospital, and this was a study that was published over the summer, over a 12-week period, 9,000 patients were admitted to our hospital, and only two cases of in-hospital transmission were documented. And one was from a spouse/family member who was a pre-symptomatic, and one, there was no known sort of traced exposure. So what we found in our hospital, and this has been replicated across the 5,000 acute-care hospitals in the United States, is that with rigorous infection control measures, we can really reduce in-hospital transmission. And taken together, the understanding of the contact tracing data from the lower-risk in schools and school-aged children, plus a paradigm shift in thinking about infection control, that caused us to, you know, update the science, and science is a process of examining the data and not just standing by our a priori notions. And we follow the data to update with our new school guidance from December 2020. So I'll turn this over to Dr. Allen, who is, you know, one of the world's experts on healthy buildings and ventilations and was a critical member of the team that helped us to, you know, move from this paradigm shift of thinking about community-level risk to thinking about controlling infections within the schools.
Great, thanks. And so it's great to be here with my colleagues and also with you all, and thanks, Mr. Phillips, for inviting us. My background is in, as Mr. Phillips said, really around healthy buildings, I'd say more broadly around exposure and risk science. So I'm, I'll share my screen in a second. Sorry, I didn't put my slides with Tom, if you can give me, or someone.
And Joe, I have a couple of slides that walk through our December guidelines. So I can, if you want to walk through those, I can advance the slides for you.
Okay, that's great. Yeah, so we tend to think about, not tend to think about, I've been advising organizations like hospitals, universities, K-12 schools, also business, finance, pharma, tech, homeless shelters, early childhood facilities. I'm a special advisor to reopening jury trials in Massachusetts. I've worked with the courts on prisons. And so through all of this work, we really have a good sense through this science, some of what Tom just shared, on what needs to be done in schools and everywhere, really, to drive down risks. We say the playbook is actually known at this point, the set of controls that are in place. So what we decided to do with this report is to implement or move away from that community metric-based approach and more towards this strict, or not more towards, towards 100%, towards infection control measures that we know have worked. Some of these are measures we put out and report, my team at the Healthy Buildings Program back in June. We've updated in November, worked with our other colleagues all around Boston and Harvard and, I guess, the greater Boston area to come up with that, the common core controls that must be in place. I want to be clear, we're all clear about this. It cannot be schools as usual. I'm just saying, go back, we have to put in these rigorous control measures. Now, before I talk about the measures we put forward in our report, there are some key aspects of this, right? Number three there, I'll talk a lot about on the infection control, but there are other, it goes beyond infection control and the science of infection control in terms of how successful this is going to be. And first and foremost, it involves trust. In fact, the only way through this pandemic is with a high degree of social trust, right? District has to do its job, community has to do its job, parents' care groups do their job, individuals, everyone doing their own, and the building's going to have to do something too. So we'll talk about this, and then we're also happy to answer questions or talk about testing and vaccines. So we want to prioritize getting back the youngest learners. This has been quite clear from the literature, the most vulnerable in terms of deficits in learning that we've already seen. And importantly, what we've seen from the epidemiologic literature, that this is the lowest-risk group, not just from risk of getting it, but also lower risk of transmission. So if you want to go to the next slide, Tom, I'll really, I'll walk through this kind of grid here in terms of what these universal precautions look like. We talked about the individual level, environmental or building level in the middle there, and then also the school-wide or structural factors that need to be in place. So on an individual level, hopefully, this is all, some of this is really clear by now, what needs to be done. Absolutely strong standards on staying home when sick, not just the policing side of this, the school side, but really building a culture of health, safety, and shared responsibility such that people are not sending kids to school and providing supports for people so they can do that. We also have to think about the basics of good hand hygiene, right? If we think about the modes of transmission for this virus, predominantly through the air, aerosol transmission, close range and also far range, beyond six feet, some contribution through contaminated surfaces of what we call fumites. And the easiest way and best way to break down that mode of transmission is through good hand hygiene, right? Encouraging hand washing throughout the day, use of hand sanitizer. These are the basics. Number three there on the individual, absolutely universal masking. I have a resource I can share later. I put out a piece in the Washington Post last week talking about better masking. So everyone has to wear a mask, that's the bare minimum, but we actually know a lot more than the early days of this pandemic, when any cloth mask will do. So I would encourage you to give guidance, we encourage you to give guidance on what constitutes a good mask, a good two- or three-layer mask. If someone is, feels they're higher risk, you can go to a higher-efficiency mask and even sometimes using a double mask, a surgical mask with a cloth mask on top for better fit. I won't go into all of the bullet points, because I really want to get this to question and answer too, but let me talk about that middle column in particular on the building level. And the first recommendation there is quite important. And this is to guard against airborne transmission beyond six feet. If you think about the power of universal masking, everyone wearing a mask, and if you're wearing a good three-layer mask, like a blue surgical mask, about 70% efficient for capturing the particles from our respiratory system that can carry the virus. 70% may not sound like a lot, but if you factor in that the particles have to go through my mask and your mask, the combined efficiency is 91%, right off the bat, 91% with everyone wearing a decent mask. That's key. Add distance between people. These building-level controls, I'm going to talk about ventilation and filtration, and you can further drive down that exposure by 99% or more from these basic control measures. In fact, if you think about what's happening in the hospital, this is all they really do. They can't distance, very high-risk environment, excellent masking, adherence to masking protocols, good hand hygiene, and hospitals take good care of their buildings in terms of ventilation and filtration. So this is absolutely key. And on this front, we recommend that schools target four to six air changes per hour through any combination of outdoor air ventilation or filtration. I'll spend just a second on that to clear that up. Anything that escapes the mask, any of these particles that escape the mask, they will stay aloft and concentrate indoors without ventilation or filtration. You really have two removal mechanisms. You bring in more outdoor air, which could be as simple as opening windows a couple inches, so that dilutes what's in the air, or you use better filtration to clean these particles out of the air. That's either on your, if you have a central mechanical system, you put better filters on your system, or you can use something like a portable air cleaner with a HEPA filter. Last bullet there, we want to encourage that, you know, special rules apply. This is a pandemic, outdoor classrooms, as much outdoor time as possible, opening windows. I even have my window, it's snowing, it snowed out here yesterday. I have my window open, measuring my own carbon dioxide concentration. Be sure I have no ventilation in my own office. But, you know, different rules apply. That means we have to dress a little warmer, even winter hats on. I think one of the simplest things we can do is, believe it or not, opening up the windows. I said this in the summer, was talking a lot about ventilation in schools. Doctor, got to interview Dr. Fauci about this, and in his answer, he said, "You're telling me we're in the middle of a pandemic and we just need to open up the windows?" And he says, "Yes, I'm saying, open up the windows." It is really one of the simplest things we can do for good ventilation, and it doesn't have to be much. It doesn't have to be much. Why don't I stop there? I think the goal is to really get some time for Q and A. And we're happy to answer questions on any or all of that, wherever you really want to dive into. We just want to be a resource for you all. So thank you.
Thank you so much. This is really helpful. Tonight, we're going to ask questions of you all in order of trustee area. So the trustees know what that, you know, order is. We are starting off with the clerk who is Mrs. Smith Folds. I'm going to ask the trustees to ask four questions. And then if we can do more rounds, we will. But that way we'll get up to at least 20 questions asked collectively. And again, if we could do another round, we will. So Madam Clerk, do you want to begin?
Yes, just give me one second to highlight my four questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'll start out with these three and then I'll come to the fourth. My first question is, does it matter where kids or adults get COVID if they bring it back to the same spot? So if they get it in the community, but they bring it back to school, what does that do? Does it still contracts in schools? Is that question clear?
Yeah, I'm, it's clear. And I'm happy to take a shot at that one. The the goal for us, right, is that we with high levels of community spread, and this is happening, for example, people are bringing cases into the hospitals all the time. If you have good stringent infection control measures in place, the goal there is that even if someone is asymptomatic or, you know, not having symptoms, but they're infectious, that the control measures would be in place such that no one else will get infected, or the risk will be significantly reduced with these measures. And then if they happen to be symptomatic, of course, you catch that person and they shouldn't be in school. So you're really trying to focus on that, you know, maybe two day window before symptoms when people can be asymptomatic or pre symptomatic and infectious. And the infection control measures are targeted to reduce the risk or likelihood that anyone who brings it into the school will spread it to the next person.
Thank you for that. My second question is, how are we still similar to where we were in March 2020? Numbers, cases, anything like that is what I'm looking for. How are we still similar to the way that we were in March 2020?
Just to clarify, this question is sort of just a summary of the numbers specifically, or or is the question more why a year into the pandemic, we're still have the same conversations?
Well, it could be, it could be a little bit of both, but how are, how are conditions still the same now that they were in 2020? How is what we know, if we know so much more now, then why are we still in similar conditions or are we still in similar conditions?
Gotcha. What I think you're asking is, well, let me sort of answer the second version of that question. So the first question is actually on our, on our website, globalepidemics.org, we have both state level, county level, and congressional district level views of what the transmission is like. We have a dashboard around testing targets as well. And on Friday, we will be launching a dashboard around vaccination. So that's sort of your, your first part of sort of where things are. But the second question I think is the much more important one. And, you know, without getting political, obviously, there's been a, a, a lack of a federal strategy. So states have been on their own in, in, in lots of ways and local county boards and local school districts have, have been on their own to try to figure out, you know, the pandemic preparedness and response. So, you know, part of our effort was to bring together the data to help inform local decision making. And I think it's important to realize, you know, realize that it's not one size fits all. There's a certain set of infection control principles that apply. But one of the key recommendations, and it goes back to the first principle that Joe mentioned, is the trust in the communities. And that we really advocate for infection control teams within the schools, but just as importantly, a situation room type of construct at the school district level where teachers, parents and school administrators can all come together and, and, and tailor some of these, you know, guidelines to the specific schools, you know, in elementary school versus a high school in terms of some of the nuances there. So the, my hope is that as, you know, the public health information, this is, and this is a big paradigm shift, you know, different way of thinking. And as, you know, this toolbox that we have is still the same toolbox we had a year ago, you know, masking, good ventilation, you know, distancing. All these strategies work, widespread testing, that goes back to your first question about people bringing in is widespread home base screening of asymptomatic individuals. All these are very important strategies. We just sort of need to really implement that. And I think the conditions will, the funding, the resources will be there. The resource is important because the current administration has proposed $130 billion to help schools reopen. And I understand that school districts are strapped for cash. And, and so, you know, I encourage you to call your congressman, call your state representatives, and let them know that, you know, there, there's a, there are plans, there are, there are playbooks out there, as Dr. Allen has mentioned. What we need is the will to implement, you know, this playbook.
If I could just add to that, on that question, agreeing and echoing everything that's been said, but from the school's perspective, knowing districts, knowing schools and how they function, part of the issue as well is that they're not typically not very adaptable. And so we put out a publication early on, around the same time this guidance came out on the school side, saying districts are going to need to be able to pivot. They're going to, this is back in the summer. They're going to need to be able to go back and forth, not just in the short term, like let's get through this, but long term planning. You're going to have to pivot between online and in person and be able to go back and forth. But that, it really wasn't part of what we were thinking. I mean, everybody was just like, let's get through this, let's get to the fall, we'll reopen, it'll be better. And we know, as we know, that didn't happen. So I think we're back in the same place in part because this is a new idea that we're going to improve this long term. Part of that means being adaptable and pivoting back and forth, being able to do both. And, and that's not going to go away. That's, I, I would say that that's not a short term issue, understanding how to do better as school districts and schools with both in person and online learning.
Thank you for that. My third question, and this goes a little bit to what you were just talking about. So my question is, can you tell me why schools keep shutting down? Once they get open, then they close. Can you tell me why that's happening? Or even, and I know it's case by case and area by area, but there has to be some kind of has to be some themes running through that. So what are those themes that run through a school can open and then it shuts down?
Yeah, so part of that is driven by the efforts at contact tracing and making sure that potential exposed contacts can undergo a period of quarantining and testing to see if they become symptomatic. But part of what Dr. Silva is also recommending is this flexibility and sort of dynamic approach. Is that, you know, you may not need to shut down the entire school, especially if you're cohorting, is shutting down a cohort or a specific classroom. And, and again, that requires a great degree of flexibility. But I also don't want to underplay that, you know, there had, there's not, it's not that there hasn't been any in school transmission. There has been some in school transmission. And that's, you know, you know, been related to some of the school closures. But the sum of it is that the overall school transmission risk is lower than the broader community. It's not zero, but we can get it down to as close to zero as possible as we have in hospitals by really following through with masking and all these guidelines. And somebody, in some of these schools, they have the adherence to some of these guidelines have not been as strict for a variety of reasons. But the goal is to really share these best practices so everybody can create the conditions that schools, once they open, can stay open.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
I was just going to say that, that I believe that the, the, in addition, the the move away from community transmission as the driving factor doesn't mean that we're moving away from communities, like schools are part of communities. And so part of what's happening is that when communities feel unsafe, which when, when things are, when, when cases, cases rise, we need to be aware that that's affecting how people are seeing and understanding and feeling about their schools. So that's just a very real, I don't think it's public relations necessarily, but that's that's community relations and that's part of running schools and school districts. So I think we're seeing a lot of that too, where they shut down, maybe open.
Thank you. And my final question this round is, how often do you encourage K through six students? How often do you encourage K through six students to wash their hands? And what impact does that have on teaching and learning in the classroom?
Can't comment on the teaching and learning in particular, not my domain, but on the infection control side and hand washing. The, you know, we, we know that transmission through contaminated surfaces or shared surfaces, or we call fomites, can happen. We also know that this is very low risk compared to the, or very low likelihood compared to the other modes of transmission. In fact, people might be surprised, no, we actually don't have any, I'm aware, fully documented cases of transmission through surfaces. That's not to say we shouldn't keep practicing good hand hygiene. What we've recommended in the past is not to necessarily disrupt. I like the strategy of every time you enter the building and the classroom, it's hand washing or hand sanitizer. Every time you leave that classroom, not just to go to the bathroom, to do anything. So it just becomes part of the day, every time in and out. And every time you're doing that, you are breaking a potential mode of transmission. And it becomes something that, you know, that doesn't necessarily need to break up the entire day, but if everyone's got their clean hands and you're periodically doing that and make it the culture every time you're in and out, that can go a long way to stopping even the low likelihood of transmission through shared surfaces or objects.
And for context, you know, that's the culture change around universal precautions in, you know, as a clinician, we were hand washing, every time I walk into a patient's room, even if they're not sick, you know, when I come out, I, I, I wash my hands. And we did that before COVID. We're doing this during COVID and I'm going to still keep doing that, you know, after COVID. And I think that's sort of the culture change around creating that accountability to really minimize the risk of any sort of infection.
So, okay, I thank you for that. Just one small clarifying thing. So if I switch stations, would I be washing hands? Like in kindergarten, they do stations. Would you wash hands at each station switch? Or you're just saying inside the classroom and outside the classroom? If a group of kids switched to different stations, would that require hand washing in your opinion?
Not in my opinion. I think periodic hand washing is fine. This is a low likelihood of transmission, unlike in a hospital where, you know, high risk environment, they're going to need to be doing this all day, every day. Periodic and frequent hand washing, but not necessarily, doesn't need to be that structured in my view. And that's to your earlier question about what we've learned. We've really learned a lot about the modes of transmission. And this playbook of universal precautions has become really clear about what actually needs to be done. And I think the, the good hand hygiene can also help not replace, but I don't know what your current surface cleaning and disinfection protocols are. But my view is that most places are over cleaning and over disinfecting a lot when the better strategy is just good hand hygiene.
Thank you, trustee Phillips. That's my four, four and a half, really, sorry, but four.
Thank you, ma'am. We're going to move on to trustee Christian in area two.
Yeah, thank you, President Phillips. The question that I have is, what are the best practices that are being used? I know you used a few other places, other states. So what are some of the best practices that they are using that maybe we can use out here in this area? That's to any one of you two.
Yeah, I'm happy to jump in on the control side around the buildings because I think we've talked pretty, you know, I think it's pretty clear about the, the masking and even the better masking is a good idea. But in terms of the building level controls, which I've found most schools to have found to be one of the harder things to deal with. And many times people think, well, I have old buildings, I have old systems, there's nothing that can be done. Actually, there, there are always something you can do. And the recommendations we put forward on how to achieve this four to six air changes per hour are, is, the guidance we're giving is really is advice that every school can do. It's not going to cost millions of dollars to upgrade your systems and take many months. And how we prioritize this is hopefully straightforward. The first is you want to bring in as much outdoor air as possible. Again, that's windows. If you have mechanical systems or unit ventilators, you want to open up the outdoor air dampers and bring in more air. Two, on any system that has recirculated air, so most buildings recirculate some fraction of the air. You want to upgrade to what's called MERV 13 filters, M E R V filters. Typical building has a MERV eight filter, captures about 20% of the particles we want. A MERV 13 will capture about 80%. So more outdoor air, better filters. If you can't achieve the four to six air changes with the first two, a really good solution, we think, that's supported by the scientific evidence, is the use of portable air cleaners with a HEPA filter. These, you know, what you'd find at a local hardware store. We have a tool that you could use and we can share that helps you size or pick the right air cleaner for the size of the room. Of course, you know, a small one in a corner is not going to do the job in a big room. So we have a tool to help you figure out what size air cleaners needed. And these, which can be $200 or $300, some districts have gone to this as a stopgap, short term measure, recognizing they can't spend millions of dollars and fix this system, or maybe they will be able to with some of the stimulus money. But in the interim, these are, you know, simple devices, you plug and play. They're sized right to the room. You're going to be filtering out the air and you really only need a portable air cleaner with a HEPA filter. If you're going to go with that strategy, avoid what we call gimmicky add-ons. You don't want UV, you don't want ionization, you don't need carbon filters. You want a good portable air cleaner with a HEPA filter. That's it. And, and that's been really quite effective for, for many districts we've worked with, really around the country.
And on the, on the, just on the, you know, how to run a school side, the, from the folks that I've spoken to in schools and districts in various parts of the country that are reopening or have been reopened. They are cohorting for one. So back to the point of if you have to quarantine, if you're in cohorts from the beginning, it's a lot easier. That in, obviously looks different in elementary schools than it might in high schools. So you have most high schools that are block scheduling. If they haven't already been block scheduling, they're doing that on, they're having A days and B days and then cohorting the students even within that. More time between classes is a big one, like passing time, particularly for high schools and middle schools. That time is of course important so that you're spacing out students for distance, but also so there's time to clean within the classrooms. The point about surfaces being like a low risk mode of transmission, certainly true. And yet I think there's something about it that feels right, you know, that we're going to clean it all down all the time. And, and that is something that is important for us to have time for teachers to do and staff to do. There's also been, and this is more, this is more on the creative side. So I don't know if this is the most effective thing, but there's some districts that are using, for example, portable, I think they're called portable amplification devices. So the teachers actually have those with them so that they can be teaching synchronously to in-person students and to students that are at home. Because for most districts, we have students that are opting to stay at home. And that part of the challenge is to figure out how are you going to teach both? And it's a logistical challenge, right? Where you have staff that are here and here and students that are here and here, and you're trying to figure out how to teach them all. So just in terms of just some practical things that schools might consider.
Okay. And the, thank you. And the second question I have is, it goes back, you had mentioned the contact tracing. But actually going back, saying like, in a small population, I just use our area where we had cafeteria workers contracted or ended up with, with the COVID. And so with the small population, to basically what I'm asking is, you know, how do we, you know, if we're dealing with a little small population, then the big population comes, you know, how do we deal with, you know, with the small population? How do we trace, you know, those who, employees who get COVID?
Yeah, so that's a great question. So, and I think there's two important points there. One is that, you know, this guidance isn't just meant for teachers and students. It's really for, you know, anybody in the, you know, teaching and learning environment. So all the staff, so all these guidelines around infection control, you know, masking, you know, applies to the entire sort of school community. So not just teachers and students. And I think that's part of sort of creating the same, you know, conditions for safety. And then again, going back to the hospital example, it's the same way. It's not just healthcare workers and patients, but we have dieticians and, you know, and, you know, cafeteria staff as well. We have environmental services staff in hospitals. Hospitals are like little mini cities. And I think it's, you know, these same guidelines and the same culture change needs to apply to everybody in the teaching and learning environment within a school. The second part is specifically about contact tracing is that the schools don't need to do their own contact tracing, right? We're not saying schools need to take on the role of what the public health agencies are do, already doing. It's really partnering with the expertise of, of, of local health board. So the, you know, the state, you know, California has a very robust contact tracing effort relative to some other states. So it's really relying on the existing encouraging, you know, students, teachers, you know, staff to answer the phone when the contact tracer's call. And so that it's not meant to be duplicative of, of the existing public health systems.
All right, thank you. And then the next question I have is, and it goes back. If you basically have Uh, if you basically have older buildings and these older buildings just only have doors to enter the class, but they don't have no windows, nothing. And then if the ventilation is not working at all in the facilities, so it's gonna take, the question is, is it gonna take a lot of money to upgrade it or get it fixed or what? What, what do you think?
Yeah, it can, it can be, um, you know, if, right, I, uh, I would say you're not alone. I mean, we, we've neglected school infrastructure in this country for decades. Um, and uh, and so this, that, you know, story you just shared is, is one I'm hearing in a lot of different places. The basics, right? The windows don't even open. And um, so I, I think these are the things we have to focus on now that are actually manageable in the short term. The basics, again, of opening up the windows, getting the fans working properly, a process called commissioning your building systems. Even if, right, so the basics, I think, if windows can't open, we have to figure out how to even get them open. Doesn't even have to be much, couple inches and actually windows on opposite sides of the room. If you keep the door open, you create a cross breeze, and I think this is uh intuitive. Uh, and this can go a long way. The, the, I'd say cheapest, but it's not cheap, um, but the, the stopgap measure, uh, it are these portable air cleaners which can um plug a lot of those holes. In other words, the four to six air changes per hour we target. Let me give a reference for that, right? A typical home in the U S gets about half an air change per hour. Means it takes two hours for the full volume of air in the space to exchange with the outdoor air, right? So pretty low. Schools, if they're meeting the bare minimum ventilation standard, get about three air changes. Problem is, because we've under invested in school infrastructure, most schools get about one and a half air changes per hour, some down to one. So that's that gap. We're trying to hit four to six. The minimum standard's three, most schools are at one and a half, so we're trying to make up that differential. Ideally, we do it through ventilation systems, opening windows. If you can't achieve that, remember it's any combination of ventilation plus filtration. So these portable air cleaners are totally filtered. So even if you had windows closed, doors closed, ventilation system's not working, that's bad for other reasons. You want fresh air, but from the virus standpoint, you could get four air changes per hour through one of these portable units. Move it to as far to the middle of the room as you can, plug and play, run it on high with a HEPA filter. If you pick a good one, I mean, that has what we call a high clean air delivery rate. I can point you to the tool that to walk through this uh in a bit more detail. Um, then, then um, you know, that's a, that's a good uh way to do this. Now that can cost two or three hundred dollars per portable air cleaner, depending which one you get. Um, but in terms of, you know, the quickest way to get open, uh, a couple, you know, I know Boston where we are has purchased thousands of these. I know other school districts have, it's like a quick way to kind of solve these problems while they work on getting the funding to do the real fixes that are permanent, hopefully permanent fixes um that are needed.
Okay, thank you. That, that's all the questions I have for right now. Thank you.
I'll point you to one other guidance document on the ventilation and portable air cleaners. Uh, my team, the healthy buildings team at Harvard, we put out a uh five-step guide to assessing ventilation. So whatever the conditions, if you have a mechanical ventilation system, these unit ventilators in the wall, just windows, no windows, we walk through the steps for how you can figure out what level you're at right now uh pretty quickly without, you know, too much expense, without having to hire, you know, an engineering firm or something.
Thank you.
Joe is practicing what he's preaching. It's thirty-two degrees outside right now. I'm, I'm in Boston as well, and he's got the window open. I'm like, I'm like shivering just watching him sit there with his window open.
Thank you, Mr. Christian, for those questions. Mr. Gonzalez Hoy in area four.
Thank you, President Phillips, and good evening, doctors. Thank you for being here with us. Um, so my first question, and I, I had like thirty, so I had to really reduce it. Um, my first question is about this piece of social trust. I read your piece that you, that you all wrote, uh, which was super interesting. Um, what recommendations would you have for us when our community cases are so high? Just to give you some reference, one of our cities that we serve has fifty, has one thousand five hundred and sixty-six per hundred thousand cases right now. So how, what would you recommend in order for us to continue to build trust with all of our community stakeholders with, with that in context?
Um, I'll jump in on this because it's an issue not just where you are, but in a lot of different places. And it's the biggest issue that keeps coming up. Um, it's trust, but it's also, I think, uh, being very transparent about um the fears and the very warranted fears that a lot of people have. Um, and a distrust with the system that is historical in nature. And that's something we also need to be very aware of and um honest about and um forthright with communities that you know where people are coming from. Um, cause it's, it's an imperfect system. It was before COVID, before this hit. There were a lot of inequities that we're all aware of, and so people are still reeling from that as well. Um, so for example, we know that, you know, people are talking about learning loss a lot. And, but we know that certain populations are getting hit worse. And that's not, I don't mean the pandemic, but they're getting hit worse because schools have not served them well historically and continue to not serve them well. And they're, they're worse off now during the pandemic. So if you look at communities of color, and when you look at student populations, particularly English learners and students with disabilities, these are two populations we focus on a lot at New America. It is not easy, it's not an easy road for those populations. They're not gonna come back, it's not gonna be easy. It's gonna be harder for them, it already is. Um, a lot of the schools that are reopening right now, and so part of what I'm saying is that you need to be honest about the risks and the difficulties and the challenges. Oh, reopening for students with disabilities, particularly those in self-contained classrooms, is very difficult. It doesn't mean it can't be done, it's just very difficult, and you need to be honest about that. Staff um are gonna be more resistant, they're gonna need more, more protective equipment, they're gonna need more um because they're gonna face, I think, a bigger challenge than a lot, some of these other general classrooms. Um, so I will say being honest is, is really important. I also would just reinforce how important it is to communicate and to stay positive. So that's maybe two things. One, be honest about how hard it is, but also be as positive as possible where you have leadership at the school level and the district level saying, we can do this and here's how. And communicating through, in many cases, it's been, um, there was a principal this morning on another call talking about how it seemed very elementary, but there were these informational videos that they put out that were, that went through the school with videos, show it with pictures and videos showing, this is the school, we, we wanna welcome you back, here's what it looks like, this is what we're doing for lunchtime, this is what we're doing in the hallways, this is, I mean, that's what parents need and want to hear, and that's what staff need to know. Here's what you're gonna get, here's the equipment we're gonna provide, here's how we're gonna handle it. Because folks have been hearing for a long time that we don't really know how we're handling it. Um, they need reassurance that there's a plan um to handle things. And I, I think there are, there are plans, and, and they can be handled, not always easily, um, but they can be handled. So I'd say transparency, honesty, and um, and some very clear and constant communications with the community.
Thank you for that, uh, Dr. Silva, I appreciate that. Um, so my next question um has to do, actually trustee Christian brought this up. Um, we've had some outbreaks with classified staff uh this year uh with COVID. Um, so vaccinations for staff, where would you put that as a priority at the moment? Especially as we consider to, to reopen schools in, in the next few months?
Um, I'll take a stab at this and, and um, and, you know, I think uh everybody will have a slightly different opinion, but I think it's incredibly important um as, you know, considering um, um, if we value in-person K through twelve education, then our teachers and staff are uh essential um in the sense that they're highly valued. Um, and I think, you know, at some, they, that also represents a category of prioritization for uh vaccinations. Now, obviously nationally from the CDC guidelines, we're still in phase one B, which is prioritizing um uh individuals who are at risk for um worse healthcare outcomes, including hospitalizations and death from COVID. So that's people over the age of seventy-five, um, eventually over sixty-five with comorbidities. Um, all that said is, um, you know, I think as a vaccine supplier ramps up with, you know, uh more vaccine options, um, my hope is that uh teachers and staff will also be uh part of the, the prioritization um for vaccinations.
Thank you for that. Um, so my next question is about contact tracing. Um, I, and I think Dr. Si, you mentioned in your presentation, and I apologize if I didn't say your name correctly. Um, what, what measures would you recommend that we put in place for district, for a district that looks like ours? Unfortunately, we haven't seen many districts that look like ours open, right, that have established contact tracing. So what places and, and what recommendations would you make to us for a community that looks like ours?
Um, so as I mentioned earlier, um, I don't think it's incumbent on the school board and the school district itself to run its own contact tracing efforts. It's really about plugging in and partnering with the broader public health infrastructure around contact tracing. So uh, you know, that's the idea of the situation room concept for the school districts. Um, isn't that, you know, the school district has to reinvent the wheel? Um, you know, if we had every school district in the country running its own contact tracing, I think that would be a very difficult logistical challenge. It's about partnering with the local health boards to, to do that. Um, and that may look, you know, again, the public health infrastructure is very, varies a lot, you know, uh, state to state, and in some, in some places it's more local, city by city, in some places it's more county-driven. Um, I don't know specifically about California, but um California, I think it's county-based, but um is really partnering with the, you know, the local health board uh in terms of the contact tracing effort. Um, but you know, part of that is, um, you know, the, the school infection control teams, the school nurses, you know, the, all of that can, can provide information to feed into that system. Um, but I don't think that we need to uh create a whole contact tracing infrastructure, you know, you know, in order to reopen.
Thank you, Dr. Si. Uh, Dr. Sylvia, Silva, I apologize, Silva. Um, I was wondering if you could uh tell me a little bit more about small cohorts and the importance of that?
Uh, sure, I mean, from, from the school side at least, or the educational side, um, it's, that's one thing that's actually quite welcome among staff. Um, it's something that, you know, if you work with teachers, teachers always want smaller classrooms. And then research on small classrooms and small schools, of course, is mixed over time. But um in general, a lot of folks are seeing this as, oh, this is interesting, this is something we've been calling for for decades. And now here in the midst of a pandemic, we're finally getting our small classrooms. And I know, I know that's not the, you know, the spirit of, of the question, but I think that's an interesting uh side note on um what it means for teachers to now be in classrooms with a smaller number of students. The cohort um in, in order to socially distance, that is. The cohort idea is that you're gonna have students that are together and stay together. So those students, however big it might be, and that depends on the size of the school, of course, and the space, but the students are gonna stay together throughout the school day. They eat lunch together, they stay in classes, and if they're moving, they move together. Um, and that has been, for a lot of schools, made a big difference in the quarantining. I think this was referenced earlier, um, just that you're able to quarantine just a small group. You don't have to shut the whole school down or the whole district, because you've just acknowledged that there's, within that small cohort of, say, thirty students, one student has come, is symptomatic, or one student has tested positive, and what does that mean? Then you can control it. So it's really a control mechanism from just people, the people side of it. Um, I don't know if others have other, on the public health side, there might be other, another answer.
I'll add to that, just to be clear, when I say um, schools don't need to be doing contact tracing, um, what I mean is it don't be, they don't need to be responsible for contact tracing cases back out into the community that may be, you know, uncovered in the school. But the cohorting that Dr. Silva mentioned is a way of keeping track of sort of the contacts within the school, uh, which that is, I think, that does fall very much into the purview of the, of the school system is. And then, and then by cohorting, you do make this a lot easier. So you're not, you know, you know, tracking students through the hallways, is that, this is a um sort of a, a, a more off-the-shelf, so to speak, sort of way of, of, of tracing the contacts within a cohort. So I, I, I don't want, I don't wanna say that that's not important, that's incredibly important within the school, but that the school, it's, we can't hold the schools accountable for what's happening in the community.
Thank you all of you, I appreciate your time. Uh, President Phillips, that was my last question.
Thank you very much, sir. Um, everybody's doing great this evening. I just wanna remind all of us, as we go through these rounds and speakers, we're asking questions uh tonight. So uh, there will come a time where we're all gonna be up here giving comments. Uh, but remember to limit this to questions. So we're gonna go on to trustee area uh five, which is uh Mrs. Reckler.
Thank you so much, and thank you to all the guests that, for coming tonight. If there's anything that I wanna pull forward from this, it's the ability to connect with people like you and access your brain trust. You know, we never would have been able to do this in person, so I'm very thankful at least for that part. Um, my first question is about data and about scientific study. And we have looked at and heard from many on different, uh, different types of studies. Um, and some of the comments that have come back is that nobody looks like us. There's been rural districts, there's been, you know, it, it, it doesn't look like us. So do you know of studies and data specifically about underserved communities, multi-generational families, um, areas with high community spread and, and, and their interaction with schools?
Um, I don't know particularly for school districts off the top of my head. Um, and Dr. Silva may, may know that data a little bit better than I do. But my uh one important response is um absolutely that there are higher-risk communities because of um, you know, vulnerability from, in terms of uh more household transmission from household size um or uh, you know, greater occupational exposures because of essential uh worker categories uh, you know, during periods of lockdown. But the important thing is that the, um, despite the risk in the community, the response remains the same. The same mask wearing, the same ventilation strategies, the same, you know, cohorting principles. Um, all that uh still uh works to control and break that chain of transmission within the school. So absolutely, there are conditions that create a higher community level risk outside the school. But with effective infection control, you can prevent that spread happening within schools. Um, so uh, you know, I, I think was, um, Elena mentioned sort of the important to remain uh optimistic. And I think that to me is sort of an important point of optimism, that despite, you know, the challenges, you know, um, in the communities um because of sort of longstanding issues, um, um, structural issues, um, the schools provide an opportunity where we can level the playing field, so to speak, by, you know, adopting um a lot of just good public health guidance and, and, and practices to create the conditions of safe teaching and safe learning. Um, and it, it's hard, so I'm, I'm, you know, I think that's, that's the other point is that, um, it, it is hard, but it is possible.
Okay, thank you so much for that. My next question is, do you have examples from across the country where school districts have partnered successfully with um local health boards or, you know, county health? If you have any examples that we could look at later, or if you could describe, you know, that they're, how they work together?
Yeah, I'll send the slides over, but I mentioned one of the, um, uh, one of the studies I highlighted uh out of North Carolina that was a direct partnership with Duke University. They actually have a website specifically around the collaborative. Um, uh, it's the, I think, I don't, I don't have the website off the top of my head, but I think it's ABC Collaborative. Um, but uh, we can send that information uh along.
Okay, thank you. The next question is, as trustee Gonzalez Hoy uh said, you know, we have, we have very low community trust. Um, and I would be looking for examples, if you can point us to other communities that had very low community trust, feeling that we could do this. And if you could give me some examples of people who are, are working on it or have made progress and you know, some, some, uh, you know, some, some learnings from that?
Um, I, I'll jump in with, um, so I'm in Montgomery County, Maryland, where it's a very big district. Um, and it's, it's a very well-resourced district, which is known for being a high-achieving, well-resourced district, but it's actually like very, very much a mixed district. Um, and I'm on one side of the county that is, is very low-resourced. Um, and there is, it is a battle to the end. So I'm not sure if when you say there's um low trust, or if um, if that is that a split um, and there's just sort of contention, or if it's about um just overall a sense that it can't be done. Um, I'd say there's a lot of counties like Montgomery County that I've spoken to who are, have what we have, which is, there's both sides. There's like the reopen and the, like, don't you dare reopen, and there's a battle. Um, and there's in that a lot of distrust that the school district can deliver, because it feels like it's flip-flopped and it's gone both ways, and it can't make a decision. Um, if it's the latter, which is that there's very, across the board, low trust that the district can deliver and safely reopen schools, I think the, the notion of chunking this down, that we're approaching it differently than we have in the past, and breaking it down is probably important. So at that point, you start to think about the individual schools, and that's where you build the trust. I mean, you have to build the trust from the bottom up. I don't think if you're already in a district where there's low community trust, you're gonna build it from up here. Um, so in that case, you have school principals that are gonna play a big role in this. So in that case, you have school principals that are going to play a big role in this. We, I spoke with some principals this morning, one of whom's in a, in a district where they lost staff to COVID last summer. I mean, and so they passed away, and that's, that's like, obviously, you know, this community is still reeling from that. I, I don't believe that that was a school transmission, by the way, but it, it was a staff member that they lost, and so it's very raw for them. And they're, they have to build it where the, the principal has taken it upon himself to, to weekly put out his videos. And he's on YouTube, he's on Twitter, he's on Instagram, he's on all the things for the parents, for the students. And it is, it's a huge communications lift for those folks, but it seems to be useful and I think helpful, and the community slowly has, has turned around. And I think it's been quite positive in the end around the reopening strategy, which, which is happening. They're open now. And the same is true. There was a principal from Chandler, Arizona, I believe, where they have 2,900 kids. I mean, it's, it's a big high school. This is a high school principal. This is not a small place, a big school. And that they're bringing, they have their kids, they're open, they've been open and shut, but they're open. But again, this is about communicating with the community and communicating with the staff. And another thing I'll add is that they, they took, took it upon themselves to survey the staff, the, the week after they opened, first week back. You, you put out the surveys then to your staff, to your students, to your, to your parents, like, what's working? We want to make sure you're okay. Do you have the equipment you need? Asking those questions and getting that feedback is how you build trust. But, so I don't have any perfect answers, other than I think it's a slow go, and I would go from, I wouldn't try to do it as much. There's leadership that's needed from up top, but you're going to have to build trust also from the bottom up.
Okay, thank you. And the last question is for Mr. Freeze in the Boston winter. I spent a number in upstate New York, so I understand that. I wanted to talk about the HEPA filters, and do you need a MERV 13 filter inside the HEPA filter?
Yeah, so really, good question, and you don't is the short answer. So a HEPA filter is a, just a type of filter, very good one, high efficiency filter. Maybe you've seen on a box or an advertisement, captures 99.97% of particles. A MERV rated filter is what the, a different rating system that we use in building mechanical systems. The mechanical systems in most buildings can't push enough air, aren't powerful enough to push air through the really tight weave of the HEPA filter. So we have these MERV rated filters, and most buildings have, you know, these MERV 8 filters, that's very typical everywhere, or maybe even a little less. Those don't capture many of these particles. They're really almost designed to protect the equipment for big particles. So you want to MERV 13 in mechanical equipment. That might be, you know, if you've seen the unit ventilators under the window, it could be the central AC system, if that's what your systems are. That's the type, you want to replace those kind of filters. The HEPA filter is something different. The standalone units, the portable air cleaners that have HEPA are designed with a fan that's strong enough to push air through that HEPA filter. So just different rating systems. Now, clear up something else on, on filter rating systems that I, is a common misunderstanding too. Sometimes you'll see something said like, well, HEPA captures most particles down to 0.3 microns, but the virus is 0.1 micron, it's smaller. And it's a misunderstanding in two ways. First, the virus is 0.1 microns, but that's not what we really care about, because the virus is always traveling in respiratory aerosols that are bigger, much bigger. So it's sometimes droplet size, one to 10 microns. Second, filters, the number you see, 99.97%, is their worst performance at a particle size of 0.3 microns. Filters perform really bad against this one size, but they actually perform better at larger particles and better at even smaller particles. So we're mostly interested in these respiratory particles, when we talk, breathe, sing, cough, in this one to 10 micron range. And so these filters are actually quite good at these sized particles. Same idea for your mask, actually. If you see an N95 mask, it's at least 95% effective. It's actually more effective for other, bigger particles that we're more concerned about. So anyway, if you can do a HEPA, if you're looking for a portable device, absolutely HEPA filter. For your mechanical system, not a HEPA filter, because very few can handle that, and a MERV 13 would be good. I want to reiterate something I said earlier too, is that it's not, these are not just checklists, and if you can't get one, then you're done. You can have a strategy that works, even if you can't get MERV 13 filters. You might do the HEPA strategy with open windows. If your windows can't open, you might go to the HEPA only strategy. I know, I've worked in some schools where they can only recirculate air, no indoor air, and they've just put good filters on that, and that's been enough. So it's really any combination of these, and avoid anything with UV right now, or ionization, and just stick to the, the basics of good outdoor air and MERV 13 filters or HEPA filters.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, trustee Reckler. My first question is, is this study session that we're having an example of what school districts can do to build trust in their community?
I would say yes, and, and so done this not just with school districts, but universities, companies, all hands meetings where brought in, I've been brought in as an outside independent, going to call it like I see it. And it's an opportunity, one, to give some information, but mostly to be able to answer questions. And, and so, and recognizing that one of the most challenging things throughout this whole pandemic is making sense of the onslaught of information that comes at us, that changes every hour, every day. And it's a lot, and everyone, this, it's hard to get your specific question answered. So I think that goes a long way towards that. For some groups, we've set up, you know, a monthly meetings where it's a 10-minute update on what the science is, open Q and A. I think that's really important, because that gets to that, the, the shared responsibility culture. You start with, well, what do we know about how this virus is spread? Then all the controls make sense. You know, talking MERV 13, HEPA, mask, right? It's, once we know why we're doing it, it's airborne, you know, the slight from shared surfaces, okay, that's why ventilation makes sense, got it, that's why mask. And then everyone gets their specific question answered, and, and things like, well, what about the bathroom? How do you handle that? What, what about these new variants we see popping up in the news every day? So I think you're exactly right, Mr. Phillips. These kind of activities are exactly towards building trust, and I would encourage it to continue. We've seen this work in all sorts of organizations outside of education too.
I would just add to that, that it's not just, it was about building trust, it's also about reducing the polarization and, and how political this has become. You know, reopen versus close. This is about sharing information and being as transparent as we can about everything that we've learned and everything we continue to learn. I think continuing that is really important.
Thank you very much to both of you. My second question is, can you talk a little bit more about the infection control team that you mentioned in the FAQ that you sent?
Yeah, so I think, again, we didn't want to be prescriptive in terms of exactly what the infection control team looks like. But the idea is, again, bringing that same analogy of infection control from hospitals is, is to have somebody, a champion, who, who can sort of be the point person in terms of the communication, the transparency, in terms of building the trust from the teachers and the students and the families and parents and the communities and administrators. And also be able to be the point person for taking all that knowledge that's constantly, you know, changing and being updated, and, and, and bringing that to the schools, and, and, and helping to implement these guidelines within the schools. And, you know, the infection control, you know, team could be a mix of all of the above, right? Administrators, teachers, you know, you know, community representatives, public health experts, you know, clinicians from the community, parents, you know. But the idea is coalescing around a set of shared principles and commitment to implementing these guidelines.
And is it your recommendation that there is an inspection control team at each school?
Yes, so I think that, and working in conjunction with the situation rooms in the overall school district. But, and I think that's the idea, is that again, it, it needs, that's part of the, the trust building, is that, you know, not, you know, all school districts are not homogeneous, and different schools may have different needs based off of the different physical plant and infrastructure. You know, the different, you know, the feelings of the teachers and the parents. And so the idea is to, is to make that sort of, that's, I think, the infection control teams, you know, it's somebody that you know, right? From the school, not some other person from another school in the district, or from some other county. This is somebody that you know and trust, and, and that's the, that's part of the, the culture change.
And I, I think I would just add, because I've heard, we've, we've heard, I would say, about this term infection control, that, that that's not necessarily the term always that the community wants to hear, or that is the most palatable. So another way of talking about it, I think, is that fundamentally, this is about trying to make sure that schools are, are healthy environments. And I mean, healthy buildings is, is certainly, Joe, I know that's your expertise, but the idea of that, I think, resonates deeply with communities. People want that. They want there to be a strong connection between education and health. There should be, there is already, but there should be more attention to that in the actual school building environment. If there's a way to show that we're paying attention to this all the time through a team, through a concerted deliberate effort, I think that's one way to talk about it. If, if infection control team sounds like something that folks may not want to hear, or it may not resonate with them.
Almost like a champion.
I'm sorry, I interrupted. Go ahead again.
So almost like the idea of a champion for, for these principles, I think is sort of a, another way to think about it.
Okay, thank you. And my last question is this, is the guidance that you are now recommending, the new guidance that you're recommending schools follow, is that guidance in line with the guidance that is coming from the state of California?
So I, I speak to the control measures part of this. I think we're ahead of a lot of people in terms of what's strictly required. For example, that four to six air changes per hour, you won't find CDC, World Health Organization, other standard-setting bodies saying that, and it's not because it's not a good standard, it's just, I, I, I think we're filling a gap in terms of, many people are saying more ventilation, but no one's really giving schools a target. So how do you, how do you, how could you use that information if I just said bring in more outdoor air? Well, how much? So this is a number we put out based on, you know, literature views and the science of how to control or remove aerosols from indoor spaces, going back to the summer. So a lot of ways, I'd say these are, you know, there are some things that are clearly in line, masking and distancing and, but I'd say at least on the ventilation side, that's ahead. And I, I think it's even more critical now, this work, as we have the new, more highly transmissible variants that are poised to be the dominant strains in the coming weeks. And I, it's my feeling that, you know, locations, not just schools, that didn't do this type of work through the summer and fall, and maybe didn't have an issue. Maybe, I don't know, say lucky is the right word. Let's just say, I think the, the margin for error is about to shrink a lot. Or the margin for, for getting lucky and avoiding an issue inside any building, a school, an office, everywhere. So it's a time for, to really, for everyone to double down on their, on stringent precautions. So I'd say, and I'd say we're at a minimum meeting what CDC, others are saying. And I think in some respects, we're even more stringent.
Thank you very much, Dr. Si or Dr. Silva. Did you want to add anything to that?
No, I agree with Joe completely, and I haven't looked specifically at California's state-level school guidance, but we've also worked closely with several states. For example, we've worked very closely with the Department of Public Health in Michigan, and, and as part of the broader engagement with our collaboration through New America and our Justice, Health and Democracy Initiative, you know, with the Council of Mayors, US Conference of Mayors, and the, and the National Government Association. So we have engaged in with stakeholders. So it's, you know, we've brought together, you know, both the, the best science from across multiple disciplines. And I think just today, you know, as an example of education, Dr. Silva, you know, exposure science from, from Dr. Allen and me, sort of the more policy evaluation side. So I don't know specifically about California, but overall, this has had a, a level of buy-in from multiple states, both on the education side as well as on the, on the public health side.
I, I would just echo what, what's been said, and on, if it's, if it's at all useful, this may seem to the point that this is perhaps even more stringent than the standards that are already out there, or what's being called for. You know, this is really not intended to be a Band-Aid, like, we're not going to just hold, like, hold on and get through the pandemic. We need to really think about this as an opportunity to ensure that our schools, in the long term, are places that are healthy for infection control, but across the board, and this is a way to do that. We've got, there are school bonds all over the place. Billions of dollars are spent every single year in improving and building new schools. We need to think about this very carefully when we build and design these spaces for teaching and learning. Fundamentally, I think that's what, what it's, this is about from the education perspective.
Thank you so much. So board members, I think we have a little more time. So what I'm going to do is, we're going to go back through. I'm going to let every board member ask two more questions. And the only way we're going to get through this, if, if we limit some of the commentary that we're interspersing throughout the questions, okay? And I'm not just saying that about one person, saying about it everybody. We could ask more questions if we cut down on the commentary, okay? So we're going to start with trustee Smith Foles, two questions.
Okay, so my first question, it's, I'm trying to rephrase it now, so it's kind of a straight question, but I don't know if that's going to happen. But will you speak to the equity issue, having windows open or outdoor classes in cold weather? We know everyone doesn't have access to, to warm weather clothes. Can you speak to that issue?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I can speak to it. I don't, I'm not sure I have a, a good answer for it, other than I think this speaks to the, you know, fundamental problems. And I'm not sure, you know, I'm capable of addressing through, you know, the controls we're talking about, but totally understand that, yep.
Okay, and the second question would be, what classes would have to be removed within your safety protocols? When I'm talking about classes, I mean, like, what classes, like PE, choir, band, what classes would have to be removed?
Yeah, great question. At least for me, and we don't specify this in the document, but really need to be careful about places where higher emission rates can happen, or where controls can't be in place. So you need to pay careful attention to lunchtime, anytime snack, eating and drinking, times when the masks are down. Same thing with gym class, where you can have masks on, absolutely, I'd say it's a must to have masks on, but you have higher emission rates if there's more physical activity. So ideally, outdoor activity or extra space, distancing between people, or better masks to do a better job of source control. In terms of extracurriculars like music, you know, we've seen outbreaks related to choir practices, higher emission rate while singing. If you're going to do that, the only schools I've done that with is, you know, moving that outside mask on, limiting the number of people in that space. Also, things should be careful, and I would recommend the same kind of more strict protocols for wind and brass instruments, if you're having band practice. We know that you can also, you emit aerosols when you're playing, of course, through your mouth, but also through the bell of the instrument, and depending on the instrument, also through the keyholes. So another one, I would say, you know, you don't want to be doing this indoors unless you have really stringent controls like excellent ventilation, and above and beyond what we're talking about. Should be clear, the four to six air change per hour we're talking about are for classrooms, smaller rooms like offices. That doesn't apply to gymnasiums or big auditoriums. It's going to be really hard to get six air changes per hour in one of these. But you get the benefit in some of these places, like a gymnasium, of the higher volume space that dilutes the aerosols too. So if you have good air movement in there, that can be a benefit. In terms of sports related, you know, they're clearly Uh, in terms of sports related, um, you know, there are clearly some sports that are much higher risk. We just saw a big outbreak or an outbreak related to wrestling, which I think is clear that we should not be doing wrestling, you know, breathing right in someone's face. There are some sports I think that can be done safely. We've seen this, particularly the outdoor sports. Um, and in some ways, um, I prefer that, that these kinds of activities be offered at schools where you can have strict protocols in place that can be monitored. Because what we're seeing in a lot of schools is that when schools don't offer that, it doesn't mean kids go home and stay, you know, totally uh, unexposed or actually out pursuing other activities and, and mixing with a wider social network than even their own school. So let's say if sports is a different, deeper conversation on the level, or just you'd have to ramp up, um, your level of controls.
And, and one, just one practical application of this lunch and PE is there's a lot of schools that are are using the gymnasium now as another auxiliary lunch space to spread out the kids. And then all the PE activities are outside. If they're not outside, they don't do them. So repurposing the gym or, or the gymnasium for lunch.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, Mr. Christian, do you have two final questions or up to two final questions?
Yes, uh, thank you, President Phillips. Uh, the two questions, actually, the first one would be, um, how small should the class, uh, classes be? We know in the classes, what, about 30 some students in it? So how small should it be?
The guidance we've given for classrooms and also, um, this really applies anywhere. First, I, uh, go on what the state is allowing in terms of max number of people in any indoor gathering. Two, uh, what can the space physically handle in terms of physical distancing? And in our guidance, we recommend using a three foot distancing for the younger grades and older grades unless community spread is over a certain benchmark in our report. And then older students, we recommend six feet. So you can start to set, you know, think about each room. How many people could you get in there with one key, uh, factor being three foot distancing for the younger kids? Or how many could actually fit with keeping that distancing? Not talking about transient or quick interactions, but really bulk of the day type, uh, spacing. The second is, are you bringing enough airflow into that space? And so you could look across your metrics and say, you know, look, we might be able to fit, I don't know, 20 students in here at three foot distancing. And we have to be hitting those ventilation targets or else the numbers got to come down again to a fewer number of students. So for me, it's a combination of that distancing plus hitting the ventilation targets. And if you get up to a number like 30, really depends on how many square feet. But you know, I think of the default occupancies we use, default occupant densities for schools, which, you know, can be around 25 per thousand square foot. Uh, if you start going above that, we would have to go above the ventilation requirements we said, because that starts to get to be more densely occupied.
In terms of staffing, I think it's important to note that when you have teachers that are teaching, you have them teaching potentially in-person students, but still responsible for a lot of students that may be online. I mean, that's another thing that the district needs to work out for staffing and who's teaching and responsible, who's a teacher of record for these students. A lot of the districts, particularly the big districts across the country, um, have seen, you know, half of the half of the students that said they'd come back, actually come back, right? So you ask you, who's going to come back in person? Let's say 50% say they're going to come back. Only half of those actually do come back in person. Um, so you, you have to consider that. The numbers of students that you may actually have in person, maybe smaller or even, even to the number that you still have out, assuming that you're allowing that, that you, that that's an option for them to still learn at home. In which case, the teacher's teaching means there's in-person health issue, but there's also actually teaching, you're still teaching, um, kids that are at home. So you have, you have both going on at the same time.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Christian, is that?
Yeah, that's, that's it.
Thank you very much, sir. Uh, Mr. Gonzalez Hoi.
Thank you. Uh, my first question is, um, should every school have a dedicated nurse?
Yes. Yes, that's all I'll say.
Yes, I think, um, part of this, um, is the earlier comment about that this isn't just about the pandemic. This is also about, you know, broader sort of opportunities to invest in our, in our, in our communities by investing in our schools.
Thank you both for that. Um, what practices would you recommend that we put in place to keep our classified staff members safe during lunchtime or outdoor activities? And I think, Dr. Silva, you were kind of talking a little bit about them. I'm not sure if you want to expand on that.
I mean, this may be more for my colleagues, just in, in terms of the protective equipment, because I think both in terms of feeling safe and being safe. Um, you need to offer your classified staff equipment. They are essential workers as well. So when we talk about teachers being essential workers, it's all the staff that are in schools that are providing the services that schools provide that are essential workers. And I would actually extend that to, this is not what you're asking, but I would extend that to childcare, which is while not part of the public system, a big issue that we're seeing with staff being able to come back is they don't have childcare for their own children. And it, so we have essential workers sort of all the way along. Um, but, uh, so, uh, in addition to the equipment, I mean, I think it's about, again, communicating to them everything that we're saying here, that they, they too are part of this community. They need to have all the information and all the equipment that a teacher would have.
Thank you very much. That was my last question, President Phillips.
Thank you, sir. Uh, we're going to move on to Mrs. Reckler with her final, uh, two questions.
Great, thank you. So I'll follow up from trustee Gonzalez Hoi. So our district, we have 28,000 students and we have, I think it's 10 or 11, certainly not more than 15 nurses for the whole district. Any advice on how we might proceed going forward?
Yeah, so I, yeah, um, so as, uh, relative to the earlier question, I think the infection control teams, ideally involves a school nurse, but the school doesn't have a, a dedicated nurse. Um, again, it's, uh, it's sort of a document that champion concept of sort of a, a trusted, um, person in the school community who can, um, work with the district level nurses, um, and, um, to, uh, bring the public health guidance, you know, into the schools. You know, and what we're advocating for is not a, a medical approach, right? This isn't about diagnosing, you know, children who are, are sick and symptomatic. This is about implementing, uh, pretty broad-based, uh, public health, uh, guidance and information. And the idea is to make this accessible. Um, uh, you know, it, this is not privileged information, right? This is in some ways, you know, just good common sense. Um, so a, again, the nurses are important, um, but I wouldn't, um, view the lack of nurses as, um, a, uh, an obstacle in of itself.
There's been a lot of, um, over the years, there's been, and California is actually at the center of this because your numbers are even worse on counselors, the ratio of students to counselors. That's been a big issue. People have pushed for this. There's a lot of talk about that versus the SROs and so forth. That's going to continue because that's just the regular fight we have over how much we prioritize public schools and how much money we want to put in, invest in public schools. But right now I would say is a, a particular moment because there's a public health crisis. So right now is the time that we're like, this is act, we, we have in Montgomery County, just as an example, we have 160,000 students, more than 200 schools and 98 nurses. So we don't have, there's not nurses in all the schools. Um, and that's a problem. And i- it, this is true across the country is my point. That's a problem. It's a problem across the country that we don't have enough health professionals that are working in concert with schools. So maybe if it's not a school nurse, you need to make sure that that, that you develop a really strong relationship between health and education and that there's the staff to, to provide the services. I mean, that there's just no really way around it. There, I don't have a good answer for how to make it happen, but it should happen nationally, e- everywhere it should happen.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, that's it, President Phillips.
Thank you so much. Um, I'm going to ask. My first question is, do you believe, and this is for all three of you, do you believe that it is necessary for staff regardless of their teachers or other staff? But do you believe that it's necessary for staff to be vaccinated before schools reopen?
I don't think it's, uh, necessary in of itself. Um, I'll put it in the context, I have a two and a half year old. Again, childcare is not the same as schools. I don't, I understand that. Um, but in Massachusetts, uh, with very self, my, my daughter's been in, uh, daycare since, uh, July uh, of last year, and that's with very robust, um, you know, infection control practices at her daycare. So again, that's one very personal example. But it's abs, and there, it's absolutely, um, po- possible. We should still prioritize teachers, absolutely, um, and, and teachers and staff. After, um, but, uh, that by itself is not a, uh, necessary condition because again, going back to the hospital infection control culture example, you know, we've kept transmission very, very low in hospitals in the highest risk settings, highest risk workers and, and patients with good infection control, we can minimize the risk. Um, so it's important, but it is not necessary, uh, by itself.
I'll second that. I agree entirely. Uh, I'd love to see this prioritized. Personally, I think teachers and administrators in schools, adults, uh, in schools should be prioritized. I don't think it's a necessary precondition for, uh, getting people back to school and, and doing so safely.
I, I will, I will third it with a caveat, which is, uh, that, um, my spouse is a teacher, not vaccinated, about to go back. That's, that's our reality that we're living in right now. Um, the feeling, uh, and the logic, what's intuitive is why wouldn't you wait? Like, why don't you wait a few weeks? I mean, this is what we're hearing everywhere. And that's, that's just a real sentiment that I think, again, back to the honesty and recognizing where the community is and where people are at, that makes sense to a lot of people. And to sort of say, forget about that, that doesn't matter. I, I think it would be a, uh, like a mistake from a community relations standpoint and just from a district standpoint to do that. But I think being honest and saying, we recognize that, like, we, we get that. So, um, we're going to try to get our teachers vaccinated as quickly as possible. But the, what, what the science actually shows to support what my colleague said is that is that even if every single teacher got vaccinated right now, not, all the students aren't and, and the community's not. And I mean, it's, it's not like everybody's suddenly going to be all vaccinated and we're out of the woods. So we gotta, if we're, we can't wait until everybody's vaccinated. So we're going to have to figure out ways to open as safely as we possibly can under any circumstances. And these are the circumstances we're in right now. That said, I totally get the people are going to push, 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 wait till they're vaccinated. So, um, that's, that's just a, I think, an issue that you have to treat with great sensitivity.
And I think to Lena's point is that, um, the guidance doesn't change even if teachers are all vaccinated, right? We're still going, because of the, you know, not all the staff or all the students may be vaccinated, students especially. We, you know, this, the air exchanges, the masking, all that stuff still applies. So it's not that the world looks different or it, it looks easier necessarily. Um, you know, if teachers are vaccinated, um, um, so I think the trust and is absolutely, absolutely critical. It's also important to mess, I think there's sort of this view that after teachers get vaccinated, then opening schools becomes a lot easier. Um, and you know, but it still requires the same, I think, attention and resources that we've been sort of talking about.
Thank you very much. And then my final question is, if we implement the infection control procedures that you have been talking about tonight and in your, uh, FAQ, do you believe that it is safe for us to reopen, uh, our schools?
I'll sort of take the first step at that. And, um, and I think the answer is yes. Um, but again, with the, um, caveat, that messaging around trust and transparency, um, and under, with understanding that this is dynamic, that this is a, um, this is a process. Like this is not an end state, but this is a, this is a process which can go in different directions. But as long as the community is engaged and the teachers and parents and administrators are all engaged to working on this process together to implement the guidelines, then absolutely, I think it's, uh, it is, uh, safe, um, to do it. If we can implement, you know, that, that's a big if, if we can implement these, uh, these policies.
I'll second that and add that, um, you know, there's no such thing as zero risk, um, in anything we do, certainly not during a pandemic. And I think a lot of the conversation even tonight, um, we think about exposure and risk in the classroom, uh, and in the school. And, uh, you know, it's for me, it's, and I think for many, it's important to recognize that there are consequences, devastating consequences to having millions of kids in the country out of school for what looks like it's going to be an entire year. Uh, so we think exposure and risk broadly, uh, there are consequences to not having, uh, kids in school learning. And that's not to say we rush back without precautions. We, it can, like I said in the opening, it cannot be schools as usual. We go back in with these strict controls in place. And then, yes, I would agree that, um, schools can open.
I would say, um, as well from a, um, physical safety standpoint, yes, I think that's right. I, I would encourage every district, which I, I have been, that, um, children and youth are going to come back and it's going to be, it's just that they've lived through a lot and they will continue to, and they, their mental health is as important as their physical health. And teachers and staff need to be aware of that, that you're going to have children coming in with a lot of behavioral, a lot of trauma, a lot of issues, a lot of sensitivities that are heightened. And they need to be prepared to deal not only with, with the actual, um, risk of a virus, but also all of what children bring, um, for just regular developmental learning, uh, it's going to be that much more. So you're going to have, there's going to have to be a lot more sensitivity to mental health as well in reopening.
Thank you so much. Um, with that, uh, I would like to say to, uh, Dr. Si, Dr. Allen and Dr. Silva, that we greatly appreciate the time that you have spent with us this evening. We know it's after 10 o'clock where you are. Uh, but you stuck in there with us and with Dr. Allen. It's after 10 o'clock and the window's open. Uh, but we just really appreciate this. This is so helpful and informative, uh, for our community. So, uh, I just wish you, you know, many blessings, uh, because you blessed us tonight.
Thanks for, uh, inviting us. I know it's been, well, I won't speak for everybody on our team, but yeah, it's a pleasure. Thanks for inviting us. The work we're trying to do doesn't mean anything unless it's brought to people who are doing the real work, which is all of you.
Yeah, joking speak on, on behalf of the team, absolutely. It's, it's been a true privilege, um, to, to me, and that, that's, you know, that's why we do this work is to communicate, you know, the science and, you know, the public health, um, to, um, you know, to the, to the public.
Thank you so much. Um, board, I now have, uh, seven 24. Uh, we have just heard a lot. I, I think that we are, are due for recess. Um, if I can have a motion for us to recess until seven 35.
So moved. You don't even have to finish. So moved. So moved.
Do you have a second for that?
Second.
Okay, thank you so much. It's been properly moved and seconded. An order of trustee, so Smith Folds.
Yes.
And Christian?
Yes.
Uh, Gonzalez Hoi?
Yes.
Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Phillips, yes, thank you. We're going to go on recess, uh, until seven 35. Doctors, again, we really appreciate you. Thank you. We have one more member of the team. Trustee Reckler. Okay, we got everybody here. Trustee Reckler, when you said Mr. Freeze in the last presentation, you were talking about Dr. Allen, but I thought you were talking about.
Oh, Mr. Freeze. No, I was talking about the, I was talking about the, 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 the coldmeister. All you California people, you know, you're, you're fifty-five is cold.
So our Mr. Freeze and Dr. World and Mr. Duffy. Is your team here?
We are here. Is Dr. Wald on?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. Okay. So we're going to continue on with the presentation and I am turning it over to you.
Great. Well, the, the bulk of this presentation will be Dr. Wald and his team, including Lewis. But I did want to say that was just a wonderful presentation that we had. And so many of the things that those folks referenced, we are doing. And we're really excited to, to share with the community, the work that's being done to get the facilities ready in many, many different ways. And to really make sure our community is fully aware that we have been working aggressively to make sure our buildings are ready when we do decide to come back. And just to calm some of the anxieties out there that we may not be doing enough. And we, we, we're working really hard every single day, multiple departments to be ready for our return to school. And that's what we hope to share with you this evening. With that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Wald and Mr. Freeze, who will lead us through our facilities readiness assessment.
Good evening, trustees. I have my screen shared, so hopefully everyone can see it. I'm going to start by doing some introductions for our panel and a little bit about their background as trustee. President Phillips did with the first group. I think it's important to know who's speaking. And so tonight we have from Keenan, which is our risk management provider, Kyle McKibben. He's the vice president. He's been with Keenan since 2013 in his position as vice president. He's responsible for all of the insurance and risk management support for K-12 public school districts in Northern California. His services include property consulting and liability insurance renewals, JPA management, contractual liability analysis, loss prevention strategies. He has his BS locally from the University of San Francisco. He's a licensed fire and casualty agent. His role, we started with Keenan because we wanted to make sure everything we had in place was safe for our students as we move forward. And Kyle then brought to us forensic analytical. And two of their staff are here tonight to present. The first one is Malik Alui. He's the project manager at Forensic Analytic Consulting Services. He's a certified indoor environmentalist with thirteen years of experience. He has focused in infection prevention and control in clean room environments, both at the healthcare and aerospace levels and high containment labs. He has aerobiology research experience with airborne allergens, indoor air quality assessments for schools and daycare centers. He has a BS in biology and MBA, and he's currently finishing up his PhD in environmental and health sciences. With Malik is David Brinkerhoff. And David has twenty years of increasing leadership experience within the environmental health, industrial hygiene and hazardous building materials consulting community. He's had a wide range of clients in both litigated and non-litigated environments, understanding the need for safety. Over the course of his career, he's built up a broad range of exposure assessment experience, including indoor air quality investigations, building and HVAC system evaluations, evaluating engineering controls and assessing various physical, chemical and biological exposures. As the senior member of the technical team, he provides the quality assurance and quality control oversight on all project reports, client hazard communications, services related to industrial hygiene and inspection assessments. And I just want to list the tagline, one of the slogans for forensic analytics. And what they say is learn how to safely reoccupy your building amid the COVID-19 crisis. So when we contracted this group, we've also been focused on ensuring that not only do we do any temporary modifications to be ready when it is safe to reopen, but also identify what permanent modifications might be needed. As you heard in our first presentation, there was quite a bit of discussion about what you need to do today, but what you need to plan for the future. And so they'll be able to tonight talk about that. We'll also at the end, talk about the fact that we do have a COVID team on the ground. We do have contact tracing in place and we have implemented many of those best practices that you heard in the first presentation and are ready to go. So with that, we're really going to be focusing on creating and analyzing every one of our spaces to identify the risk factors that are in place that need to be mitigated. We were able to create a metric through forensic analytics that will give you a facility readiness score that will help, that helps us prioritize where to put our efforts. You, we will talk tonight about the best practices for maintaining the safe occupied spaces. Several of the questions trustees had earlier tonight, we're going to go into more depth about how we mitigate that. And we're going to talk in specifics about potential capacity guidelines based upon all of the occupiable square footage that we have, all of the guidance that you've heard from the research and from the California Department of Health. So with that, I'm going to pass it off to Kyle, just to quickly introduce how he brought this to us.
Yes, thank you very much, Tony. And good evening, trustees. As Tony mentioned, I'm a vice president with Keenan. And my primary goal with West Contra Costa Unified School District has been historically to identify risk management needs and help implement resources to mitigate property and liability risk exposures. Due to the ongoing pandemic, the conversations naturally have been centered around COVID-19. And through discussions with the district, it was determined that expert analysis was, was necessary to further evaluate West Contra Costa USD's district sites to truly ensure the safety for students, teachers and the community in the reopening of schools. So forensic analytical consulting services took the lead on this project because they are truly the industrial hygienists experts working with school districts on safe reopening plans. And as you'll see this evening, through site-specific template designs and advanced scientific calculations, facility readiness scores were developed to create a roadmap for risk mitigation efforts. And as Dr. Allen mentioned in the previous presentation, it's really not possible to eliminate all risk within school districts. That has been true even before COVID-19. But through measures of implementing a comprehensive COVID-19 reopening plan with defined infection control measures, addressing specific facility needs and adhering to local, state and federal health guidelines, West Contra Costa USD could greatly reduce the risk exposures of COVID-19. So with that, that's the background of where we've gotten today and the involvement with forensic analytical. And so for now, I will turn it over to the forensic analytical team to speak to their analysis that has been conducted.
All right. Thank you, Kyle. Thank you, Dr. Wald. I'll start with just a little bit of background. So we're, as mentioned, we're an industrial hygiene or environmental health consulting firm. We've been here in the Bay Area for about thirty-five years. A lot of people, my wife and most of my family included, don't know what it is that we do as industrial hygienists. They call us the asbestos guys or the mold guys or, you know, those people on construction sites with the microscope on the back of their vests. Very simply, what we do is we evaluate exposures and we design ways to reduce those exposures. That could be in an occupational setting. It could be in a community setting. It could be in the school. Talk about these exposures, we tend to talk about them in three broad categories. We talk about chemical, physical and biological exposures. Chemical exposures may be things like asbestos and lead or maybe things like formaldehyde or welding fumes or any number of chemicals. Physical exposures tend to be things like noise and vibration. Biological exposures may be mold in a building or bacterial issues, or as we're discussing today, viral issues. Very early on, about a year ago now, as a company, we put together what we call our, our internal COVID expert group. And that's a group of nine certified industrial hygienists that have done nothing but eat and breathe these issues for the last year. We've, in that time, had the opportunity to work with cities and school districts, private schools, colleges, universities, a whole variety of businesses to, to help look at their spaces and develop programs designed to reduce the risk related to COVID. My colleague, my colleague Malik and I have been working with West Contra Costa USD for, for months now to conduct risk assessments of schools throughout the district. So I've said risk assessment a bunch of times now. What does that mean? And why do we do them? A risk assessment is kind of a broad term, but what we're talking about in this context, this context is the way that we evaluate buildings and the way that those buildings can increase or decrease the risk of spreading infection. This process is either recommended or required by any number of bodies, Caloosa, Department of Public Health, Department of Education. The process itself starts with a physical inspection. The process itself starts with a physical inspection of the space. So we go and we look at these spaces and we evaluate the conditions. We call them amplifying factors, the things that increase the risk of infection. And we do that taking into account the type of transmission routes that are out there. So we, we talk about person-to-person airborne and surface infections. Well, the, the data we have now suggests that, you know, risk of infection from touching the surface is much lower than being in close contact with people. So we take those things into, into account. And we look at the ability to do physical distancing. Is the space crowded? Is there a lot of furniture or the things that go for people to separate? We look at what kind of, what kind of uses in the space? Is it a music room? Is it, you know, a cafeteria, places where people congregate? Ventilation is a big part of this, looking at how the space is ventilated. There's been a lot of discussion on that tonight. And then looking at contact risk, although that's low, you know, spaces that are cluttered become hard to clean and, and pose issues when it comes to trying to do all these things. We take all these factors and we've, we've built an algorithm that we call the facility readiness score. What this really does is it gives us a way to prioritize efforts across the district. Some buildings are better than other buildings at, at decreasing risk. And so it's just important to remember, this isn't intended to quantify health risk, right? This isn't like a health study where, you know, we know if smokers have a 40% higher chance of having cancer or something like that. It's really about prioritizing our efforts to reduce the risk in our buildings. And with that, I'll turn it over to Malik. He's going to talk about some of the details of what we did in all these spaces in the district.
Thank you, Dave. Thank you, Tony. Good evening, everyone. So as Dave mentioned, the aim of the facility rating score is not to quantify risk, but rather to acknowledge the likelihood of occurrence of the risk and the general public and in a specified space. And so mitigation efforts would be prioritized in locations where infections are more likely to occur. For instance, again, as, as was previously discussed, we know that person-to-person transmission remains the main route and that it's less likely for people to contract the virus from surfaces. Hence, when we structure the score, we assign more weight to person-to-person than to surface transmission. Now, risk levels, low, moderate and high are determined based on what the normal conditions of the space should be and what types of tasks and activities occur in that space. However, if we observe unusual conditions, then an amplifying factor is identified, which will increase the baseline score from low, low to moderate, moderate to high and high to very high. And to illustrate this, next slide, please, Tony. As you can see on the third report on the right, there is an average score on the upper right corner above three. This is probably either the basics, the baseline score was three or slightly less than three, but when amplifying factors were identified, this, the space increased. So what are we trying to communicate to stakeholders here? Next slide, please, Tony. What we're trying to, to say is that if this space, if the space scores between one and slightly less than three, then this space is fit for occupancy under certain conditions. Those conditions are continuous reinforcement of infection prevention efforts and continuous maintenance of building systems, controls in, in, in place. So in the event where an amplifying factor is introduced, and this could be due to modification of activity, alteration of the layout whereby physical distancing is not possible anymore or failure of some building systems such as ventilation system, then the score will increase along with the, with the reference range that you're seeing here. And it, it will render the space unfit for occupancy until failures have been remediated and violations have been mitigated. So what do we look for during the risk assessment? Next slide, please, Tony. So when, when we are assessing location spaces, again, we look at what the baseline conditions or the normal, normal conditions should be. And then we observe unusual conditions. A clutter, for example, makes it difficult for regular cleaning. And during disinfection in response to a COVID-19 positive case, that'll make it more, more difficult. We know for a fact that nobody cleans through clutter. You clean around clutter, so you'll be missing spots. You'll be missing, you'll be, you know, wasting resources, labor and increasing your costs. Other materials and furnitures and textures require unconventional cleaning methods such as porous material. And one of the CDC recommendations is to, to the extent feasible, eliminate or store away porous furniture to facilitate cleaning and disinfection. Next slide, please, Tony.
Before we jump there, we, we just wanted to, to stop there for a moment because one of the projects that we've been working on is to remove some of the furniture that is been used for academic purposes because it creates a different learning environment. But if you have shared porous material, that amplifies the potential risk. And so that's been part of our work is to identify those pieces because of the cleaning. And so can you kind of just amplify or explain what are some of those things that aren't program-specific that can become problematic, Malik?
Sure. So although it's less likely for people to, again, to, to contract the virus from surfaces and it's more likely to be from person-to-person and we have the airborne concentration as well. When we, when we assess the space, we, we have, again, we have the baseline risk levels. And then we, we select on, on an Excel workbook, the algorithm, we select the, the amplifying factors. So if you have a clutter, then there's an option to select that there's a clutter and that, and you see you, you, your score increasing from two to three or three to above. So again, even though it's less likely that people contract the virus from surfaces, this doesn't eliminate, it's less likely, but it's not unlikely for people to get, you know, infected from surfaces.
And I would just add also that the more, the more furniture we have in a sp, in a space, the less space we have for people to spread out. So by removing things that we don't need, that gives us the opportunity to space out further.
So we also look at ventilation. Now, what's the definition of adequate ventilation? When, when we want to assess air flows in a classroom in a specific environment, we look at the, the units, the mechanical infrastructure that is providing ventilation to that space. So what we did for the classrooms and other spaces in the campuses that we've assessed is we looked inside each vent, unit ventilators and we looked at roof air handling units. First of all, we inspect the integrity of the components of that, of that unit because with proper maintenance of the equipment, you get proper operation and, and better functionality. And we also look at the MERV grading and the filters in place to see if, are we meeting the minimum mechanical code requirement? And is there room for upgrade with, with, with the controls and equipment in place? We also look at whether or not these ventilators are providing outdoor air. And we're referencing the ASHRI standard 62 for minimum outdoor air requirements for schools specifically, classroom specifically. And in the absence of outdoor air intake, we see if we can supplement with natural ventilation. So we look for classrooms that have either doors to the outside or operable windows. And therefore you can see classrooms with a baseline score of two, going from two to three, and then amplifying the total average score, making the, the space unfit for occupancy until those challenges are mitigated. Now, I'm going to dwell a little bit on this slide. So common spaces are very important because common spaces is, is where the cohort rule doesn't really apply. So you don't have the, the, the cohort magic number of no more than 14 students plus two adults. In these spaces, you're more likely to have large gatherings. So when we inspect those spaces, we look at the possibility to physically distance in those spaces and what kind of activities and tasks occur in those spaces that may pose, you know, higher risk of transmission. For example, there have been reports about higher, higher transmission rates inside teacher lounges. And we know teachers tend to socialize in lounges and one violation is taking off the face covering to, to, to drink and, and speak while, you know, while, while, while eating and drinking. So we take this into account when we're, when we're structuring the score and developing the, the FRS. Other examples are locker rooms. We will look at how easy it is to clean and disinfect. And we know for a fact that there's a respiratory risk in there when people probably change their outfits, they will have to take off their face covering as well. So those spaces are very important and should not be neglected. And therefore maximum occupancy to those spaces should be reinforced and they will have significantly limited, limited occupancy to make sure that we are adhering to infection prevention and control elements. So what should we do to maintain, you know, low risk of infection? Should we meet the minimum requirements to be compliant? Or should we do everything we can? And this is good practice versus best, best practice to promote health and safety. Of course, if resources permit. For example, if four feet separation is allowed, have we made all efforts to achieve six feet of distance? And if we did, and we're going to adopt the four feet distance, we should optimize ventilation and we should consider other separation techniques. And this is a recommendation from the, the most recent CDPH school guidance document, eating and drinking and medical conditions. So we know that during eating and drinking activities, people tend to take off their face coverings. Some other people have medical conditions that prevent them from wearing a face covering. So we should try to use outdoor spaces when feasible. And when, when feasible, meaning that an outdoor, an outdoor space is actually available and the weather permits. And if we are aware of people who are, who have medical conditions that prevent them from wearing face covering, we should provide accommodations for those, for those people. Ventilation is, is something that, it's not an individual effort, but we should at least meet the minimum building and mechanical code. So the recommendation, the best practice is to maximize outdoor air to the extent possible, making sure that when we, when we're doing that, we should not really blow directly into, into people and individuals. So maximizing air doesn't mean that, you know, we shouldn't look at the risk of, of large airflow as well. We should also look at the pressurization resulting from, from outdoor, from, from increased airflow. MERV 13 and higher are recommended. So if, if we're allowed to have a minimum of MERV eight, we should make sure that we supplement with natural ventilation if we have operable windows and doors or have portable HEPA filters, which is strongly recommended as well in the guidance document. Now, cleaning and disinfection, as we discussed, regular cleaning is still mandated between use and as much as needed. But disinfection is strongly recommended in response to COVID-19 case. However, we have to be careful how we choose disinfectants specifically in school settings because we know that we don't want to solve a problem by causing another. So we know that some chemicals are, which are not, you know, known as asthma-friendly ingredients, do not have asthma-friendly ingredients such as pericetic acid, chlorine base, quaternary ammonium. They may exacerbate asthma and other respiratory conditions. So the selection of, of chemicals is, is very important. The way, the dispersion method of the chemicals is also important. We should be careful about how we apply those chemicals. If, if, and, and my next slide will talk about the technologies and emerging technologies that, that most of you are familiar with. So we're familiar with UV light lamps and UVC. Now, this, this is an existing technology and there's a lot of debate about how safe this technology is. Well, we know that FDA, as a regulatory agency, they recommend that people consider both the risks to people and objects and the risk of incomplete inactivation of the virus. Because we don't have studies that prove how efficient UVC light is against this coronavirus. There, there have been studies about the previous coronavirus, but not about SARS-CoV-2. And now we have variants of that virus as well. So this poses an additional challenge. Now, this technology has been upgraded and you've probably been hearing about far UVC light, which is a wavelength that is considered safe because it doesn't penetrate the skin or the cornea of the eye. But again, there have been some research studies and articles that, that have been inconsistent regarding the safety of, of far UVC light. And if there's a slight possibility that it can score, it can cause skin damage, then we should avoid the exposure. Other technologies such as bipolar ionization. Now, you should know that neither CDC or EPA endorse these technologies. They just have opinions about these technologies. And needlepoint bipolar ionization is, although it has been here for quite, for quite a time, for quite a while, it's still considered as emerging technology because in the absence of an established body of evidence reflecting the efficacy of this technology, people should exercise caution when they're using it. I'm going to talk now about the spraying, the sprayers and the foggers that you probably see cleaning and restoration, restoration companies use. Now, fogging is, is delivering a mist directly into a surface. Electrostatic spraying is actually charging particles so that they can cover as much surfaces as possible, as many surfaces as possible. However, again, when you're, when you're using such technologies, you have to make sure that the environment is well-ventilated, that no people are around. Because again, we don't want to solve a problem by, by causing another. And it's very important to, to note that the EPA requires that chemical, industrial companies and manufacturers file a different registrations for their chemicals, which, which should be used through sprayers and, and foggers.
It's really important to remember that right now in this climate, there's, there's a lot of snake oil out there. A lot of these, you know, either new or repurposed technologies at, at the very best may help to supplement our basics, right? Good hand hygiene, wearing your mask, keeping your distance, good ventilation. The best case are some of these things help with that. The worst case is they make it worse or, or they're a poor use of resources. I've seen, you know, $10,000 robot UVC machines, you know, just put it in your space and it, and it, it disinfects everything. Well, as we discussed, disinfection of surfaces really isn't our prime focus anyway, but what about the shadow from where the computer screen is, right? The, the UVC can't go past that. So I think, you know, really focusing on those basics, base covering, stable groups, physical distancing, ventilation, hygiene is, is, is really where the focus should be, not on, not on technological solutions that aren't necessarily proven.
So this shifts us to Lewis.
Yes. So the facility evaluation has been completed underneath the guidance of forensic analytics. David and Malik. And our goal is now is to make sure that our facilities score is below 3.0. And in most cases, we're able to achieve that by removing clutter from the classrooms, removing soft furniture, just to decluttering process as well as increasing ventilation and filtration in the classrooms. There are some cases though, where we have lack of proper ventilation in the classrooms, where we're going to rely on devices such as HEPA filtration in the classrooms to enable us to lower our score, scores below 3.0. Next slide. To address the long-term facility issues, we know we, we have facility modifications that will need to be made. And so currently, we're looking to, looking at evaluating processes for both Collins and Cameron Schools under contract to assess their filtration systems. We're also out for proposals to solicit proposals from firms to do a study on our facilities that do not have proper ventilation and to guide us down the pathway of determining what are the best methods to bring proper ventilation and modifications to our facilities. And we know we have some buildings that were certainly have larger scale modernizations that will need completion in order to bring in a permanent solution for our ventilation. Next slide, please.
So before we jump there, we just wanted to hit a couple of these numbers here that we talked about, there's going to be a score created. So the first question everyone's going to have is can I have a score for that, this room, that room, my room, your room? Those scores will be finalized right after the February break. I think it's important because we're still doing some mitigations to get numbers down, putting in other equipment there, trying to get all rooms down into the twos as we go forward. So it's important that we've already started. So it's important that we've already started the process and we're continuing to do those risk analysis pieces as we go.
And Mr. Meyer will walk us through some of the facility specific recommendations and modifications we've been undergoing.
Oh, good evening. Uh so what you see on the right on this photograph is the first HEPA air purifier that we installed within the district. Uh we've completed approximately two hundred and thirty installations throughout the district. And with that, this is the type of equipment that helps us to get our scores uh below three or to make them to improve the air quality within the classrooms. So that is an example of a portable HEPA filter. I put a Clorox bottle on the top of it to give you a sense of scale. So that's why it's there is only to show you what it looked like. Others, uh specific solutions that we're doing is if there is a positive case, uh our operations department will increase their cleaning and disinfection in the affected areas so that we can concentrate on making sure that the areas are safe. Um the other component that is really important for us is rooms to be organized. Uh again, furniture decluttering is is critical to the success of allowing social distancing of six feet uh to accomplish that. Even though our cohorts are at fourteen, our capacities within the classrooms, uh what we're trying to do is manage the furniture so that we do not remove furniture, but we're able to infuse it in the classroom. And later on in this presentation, you'll see an example of what that means. So effectively, what we're doing is we reduce the porous surfaces. Everybody asks, what is a porous surface? Think of carpets in classrooms, uh the learning carpets that we have. So we're rolling those up, storing those onsite. But those are things that we can remove in the interim to make sure that we don't have those to deal with uh because of the porous surface. And again, the idea is with the maximized space, we can improve our classroom layout. Well, the next steps that we've completed so far is we have done uh an assessment of every classroom within the district. And so we're working with forensic analytics through that analysis, which uh will be uh available after uh ski ski week. Will in with increased classroom filtration purchased and installed. So our minimum standard now is Merv thirteen. So um originally, we were at Merv eight, uh but now everything that we purchase is a Merv thirteen as a minimum. Um we've also implemented the contact tracing software, which there'll be a slide further in that'll explain that in further detail. Um with general services, we purchased a P P E additional signage to remind students and staff about uh proper uh behavior during this time. And we're using HEPA filters and hand sanitizers throughout uh every classroom. At every door will have a hand sanitizer. And at every entry portal, we'll be installing those so that uh as people enter these areas, we can go ahead and uh have them provide them with safe products to clean their hands. Um additional signage, plexiglass in the public areas, uh again, air purifiers. And uh with that, uh we're working closely with forensic analytics to evaluate the current guidelines and know just as necessary as we go forward. So that's really our strategy.
So we recognize that the move to reopen in-person instruction, it's very emotional. And we know that every party, regardless of where you land, all wants to get back to school. So we're using the science to guide our plans. You heard tonight from Harvard some of the air issues that we needed to address. And you can see that we've already begun to purchase those temporary solutions. It's really important that we mention the word temporary because in some of our facilities, just installing a portable air filter is going to get us going now, but it's not going to be for long term, the perfect solution there. And so we do need to make sure, as our experts said, you have to recognize today the mitigations you're making to open are permanent solutions you have to plan on as well. And so we do recognize that under the current guidelines, whether vaccination is mandatory or not mandatory, it's going to be a while until we can probably do one hundred percent capacity of our sites. And so as we've been developing our plans, we're building all of our structures and plans based on the fact that we're going to have to be modifying our procedures to be prepared to be safe as we go forward. At present, based on the analysis and all of the science that we heard today, our current cohorts are likely fourteen students to one adult in most of our classrooms. That's the current guidance. If you go beyond that, you start to have the amplifying factors of person to person contact, bring that score back up into the more risky zone. But we certainly have put mitigations in place and already purchased hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of equipment and done that installation so that we are making sure our facilities are ready to go. While we continue to wait for the state and the county to prioritize those vaccinations, and I know that there's articles and we talked about it tonight, whether or not it's essential or not essential, we do know that anything that mitigates the risk is a positive. And so we have purchased those HEPA units. We're stockpiling the necessary P P E equipment, making it very visible, very accessible. We're preparing the classrooms for social distancing. We've created contact tracing procedures, and I'll talk about that in the next slide. And we're ensuring that our safety protocols are posted at every site, that there's clear signage, so everyone understands the pieces. So Facilitron is our software that we use for facility use. Well, they went and created an Q R entry code system where every employee in the district will need to, when they walk into any building, have to scan themselves in with the Q R code or go online and log themselves in. This is going to give us an electronic tracking of every adult that goes on to every campus every day. Students will track through the attendance system when they come back because we'll have daily attendance electronically. If and when we have any concerns, we'll be able to immediately identify who was there and during what period of time. This is mandatory for all employees as we roll it out. We had tested it at BISL, Human Resources and the F O C buildings where maintenance and business are. And we're starting to now load in all of the employees for all sites and roll that out across the entire district. This is really important because we have a COVID team of dedicated individuals, our nurses and our security team, Michael Booker is part of this. If anyone has any possible feeling that they might have been exposed or if they, hey, I just tested positive, all they have to do is send an email to covid@WCCUSD. It instantly goes to the COVID team. They then do all of the contact tracing, all of the appropriate notifications. There's a lot of emotion about who gets told when they're exposed and we can do a whole different presentation on what the protocol is for continuous exposure in those pieces. But that's in place. They're tracking and monitoring each and every case. We're also implementing a hotline so that if an employee or someone sees another employee not following the best practices of wearing a mask, maintaining social distance, they can inform us, not for discipline initially, but for us as supervisors to go and ensure that that safe behavior is in place so that everyone will be able to go. So that's part of what we've implemented. Vince talked about spacing. So what you can see here is by grouping the desks together, but then for no better purpose, putting an X on top of one of them, don't go here. We can create models for that fourteen to one where you have that social distancing. So everyone that's in the um blue is don't be there. The green, that's the desk that's available as you go forward. And if you do A B cohorts or something else, then you can swap them to make sure you're not having other contact pieces. So that's partially how we're really configuring our classrooms to be ready. And you can see they're a little more bare. Um but it's about maximizing the facility use. This is just a little bit of, you can see the air filters installed in several classrooms. You can see some of the signage starting to go up and other pieces. We have more pictures, but we just didn't clutter the presentation. Those are things that are being put in place now so that we are ready. So there's been a lot of challenges for how we're starting. And there's a universal desire for normalcy. We undertook this review because we have an obligation to ensure that every one of our stakeholders knows that we're taking serious their safety. And we are identifying the parameters and the limitations of our sites so that we can clearly develop those implementation plans to make sure as we have individuals back on our campuses that they're safe. We use the expert guidance to purchase what was necessary, but not get caught in the red herrings of spending and wastefully spending money for things you don't need. We're buying the things that we do for safety to support our students, our staff and our families. And with that, we thank you very much.
Thank you very much for uh that presentation. We are going to now start with questions from the board. We're gonna go uh with four questions uh each for now. And that will get us to twenty questions, so we'll see where we are there after that. So trustee uh Smithfolds.
President Phillips, you said four questions for now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um what happens when the power goes out? You have filters that are plugged into the wall. When the power goes out, how quick does that room then become incredibly risky?
I would say with any power outage that we would have, um we have procedures where we would be uh exiting the building and are going to common areas. Uh we would hope that would be not a common occurrence. Um but again, if the question is about air filtration, um I would leave it to the experts. But as any, any, anything else, we have windows that can be opened that will provide supplemental um airflow into the classrooms uh during those times when the power would be out.
So the second question is, um we are in, we were talking about getting every room or every building.
Trustee Smithfolds, just can I interrupt for one moment? Mr. Freeze had said he was gonna leave something to the experts and then I didn't hear any experts say anything. So you want to add answer her question?
Sure, I'll 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 jump in there. I mean, the the time period is 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 based on a whole number of factors, right? We're talking about ventilation, there's mechanical ventilation associated with the building, there's portable ventilation and there's natural ventilation. So the period of time it would take for for aerosol to build up is going to vary. But uh what Mr. Freeze said, I think in the event of a power outage, um the appropriate thing would be to to have the children leave the classrooms.
Okay, thank you. Um you said that we are, we want to get, uh Dr. Wool, you say we want to get down to the twos. What two are you looking for? There's a whole range of twos. There's two point O that's in the green, there's two point eight that is in the orange. What two are you trying to get everybody? The buildings to?
So and I'll I'll, again, the mitigation is that we are trying to reduce risk. We can't eliminate risk. On the natural, if you have no modifications, you're into the three, that creates a level of risk that becomes more dangerous. It it really isn't a perfect number, and I'll let um David and Malik talk about what that number means because it may mean something different to each person.
Yes, I'll 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 jump in if you want, Dave, on on that. Okay, so so these ranges, these reference ranges are not only for classroom, they are for common spaces and admin offices as well. A typical classroom uh according to our F R S is between two point five and two point seven. So if you have a classroom with which scored above three, when you do the mitigation factors, it will bring it down to that range, but not not below two point fives. You have to understand that we're not trying to make classrooms as clean room environments in hospitals. The the risk is still still exists and you don't have the control measures and the control measures is really expensive and it's not really required to bring down those classes, those references to to two and and one. One actually depicts a single office because we've inspected all spaces in the facilities, not only classrooms. We've seen uh single offices, cubicles, conference rooms, uh the cafeteria, uh other, you know, uh activity rooms, and and then we looked into the classrooms as well. So these reference ranges, they pertain to different categories of of location. I hope that answers your question.
And so it's really a color. You're trying to get out of the red into that color range, which is anywhere within that band.
A a two point one shouldn't be thought of as safer than a two point two. The twos dictate our mitigation strategy.
And I think there is, um you know, the orange area, we're both seeing classrooms with occupancy of fourteen to one drive us in the neighborhood of the the two point eight range with mitigation measures.
Okay, so my next question is with the removal of the furniture and the carpets and all of the other porous surfaces that you're talking about, what about kindergarten classrooms and T K classrooms? Are their pods, their little areas going to be removed? And when I say that, like, they go to different stations. Are those stations not going to be there anymore? Are you recommending that?
Vince, I'll turn that over to you.
And so as we've heard from uh forensic analytics, yes, what we're trying to do is maintain social distancing at six feet. And so with that, uh the groups can assemble, but we need to maintain our social distance. So uh those pods would not be allowed to be in an area which would affect that distance. So if you're getting them closer than that, then we want to expand that out so that they have the social distancing that is mandated.
And then there's some exceptions. For example, there are some clusters for our special needs students that have very specific types of furniture and specific interactions. And without those, they really cannot implement their program. We're not going to be removing those very specialized things. What we'll do to mitigate in that case is we may have to even more reduce the number of individuals to bring that risk down a little bit so that we can have that and implement more cleaning in between for those common spaces. So it's not a perfect no or yes, but it is, we have to significantly limit where you have people using um shared surfaces, and and that's the challenge of something that can spread.
And we did hear from Dr. Allen and Dr. Sol and I talk about um younger kids and closer spacing um is allowable. And so it's something that we have to continue to work with um as we better understand um the virus and how it spreads.
My final question, my fourth and final question is, did Kenan take a look at what a sports a sports event would look like? So are concession stands out? Or gee, is it where you don't have any audience, it's just the kids playing? Are you spacing kids out when they are sitting on the bench, getting ready to come into a basketball game or a football game, et cetera? Did you take a look at that risk?
So I I can ask, answer that. We we've actually been in close contact with county health and there's very specific guidelines as it pertains to athletics right now. And it is currently, we're in the stage where it's only conditioning, no contact. We have not reached in the state a tier where any contact sports are allowable. At this point, the only sports that look to be opening up for C I F are golf, tennis, cross country and track. At this tier, the next possible tier would open up softball and baseball. Sports like football and soccer are not allowable at this point. No spectators whatsoever in the C I F guidelines. Spacing um of the benches with the six foot spacing for those players that are not on the courts with masks are required. There's very specific guidance. So there would be for the sports that C I F and um county are allowing, it is very social distance, very limited with the amount of participants and spectators.
Those are my four, thank you.
Thank you so much, ma'am. Uh Mr. Christian, you have up to four questions that you can ask now.
All right, thank you, President Phillips. Uh the question I want to start out with, um especially when you look at elementary, middle and high school, um and it goes to the cleaning, um with the shortage of custodians that we do have, how are we going to maintain the cleaning uh throughout the day? Um and a wiping and all the necessary things that needs to happen. So how are we gonna?
That's a good question. That's a good question.
What are we gonna do?
So I'll start and then let Vince kind of jump in. The least spread, the least issue is surface contact. So there's the protocols for that. We are going to have to look at what we do with our staffing pieces. We are going to have to look at what we do with our staffing pieces. Because one of the things is the second you try to add additional staff, you're adding additional cost that has to play in. So Vince will talk a little bit about our current protocols for cleaning and how we're doing that.
And so as we continue to clean our campuses, um, there will be a specific focus on high touch areas. And so we'll concentrate on those door handles, uh, the high contact surfaces, horizontal surfaces within the classroom. If there was a potential, um, location where we have a person that is tested positive, additional cleaning would come in to make sure that everything is wiped down and sanitized. Uh, as I've heard this evening and from the experts, um, the transmission of, of this and they'll verify that is not through the surfaces so much. So as long as we maintain cleaning surfaces and our, our protocols for, you know, keeping those floors clean, horizontal, uh, surfaces clean, uh, we should be in an acceptable condition, uh, based on our current strategy.
This is a really good example of the only thing constant over the last year has been change. So, you know, six months ago, we were, you know, trying to disinfect our packages that came in from Amazon. Current guidance, particularly for schools, does not, uh, indicate a need for disinfection unless there's a sick person in the space. And then you would, you would disinfect the areas that person spent a lot of time in. So we've moved away from routine disinfection. Cleaning still needs to happen, right? We still need to do regular cleaning, but the application of disinfecting chemicals all the time on, on all the surfaces is, is no longer the recommended approach.
Okay. And the other part to this is, um, uh, it was mentioned earlier from the other presentation about airborne. Should Lysol be sprayed if, if somebody coughing or sneezing?
No, simply, I mean, it's, it's, we, in general, we don't want to put, um, any chemicals into the air in our breathing zones. Um, and that goes for Lysol and Mal talked a little bit about fogging chemicals. Those all, uh, provide the, the potential to expose people. Um, so we, we generally want to avoid that.
Yeah, I think it goes back to proper masking and making sure that our folks are socially distancing and wearing their mask at all times. And we shouldn't be trying to supplement that with spray aerosols that, um, had limited or no effect on the virus.
And if, if I may add, uh, to this as well, if you don't mind. So the, the, the proper way to reduce airborne pathogens is with proper dilution. That's using adequate ventilation. The only way you can actually disinfect or sterilize air is through what healthcare facilities do, which accumulation. And that's not something recommended, um, in, in classroom environments. So if you have adequate ventilation, your, your filters are efficient, then the particle removal efficiency is, is higher. And by installing HEPA filters to supplement what you currently have, this will further dilute indoor pathogens.
Okay. And then the next question that I'm going to ask is, uh, it's about sharing. You know, all of our kids like to share things. So, um, so if, so information would have to be given. So, um, so how would that be done?
So all of those details get presented in, in, in what Cal OSHA calls a COVID safety plan, right? That's a requirement for schools to reopen. They have to develop a, a plan that addresses those kinds of things. And then students and staff have to be trained, uh, to those requirements. And then there's got to be a process to, to audit compliance, right? This is, this is difficult stuff, right? We're changing people's behavior and that's, that's tough to do. So, you know, having a good program, training people to the program, reinforcing the program is where we really start to change people's behaviors over time.
So we've already begun categorizing all of those different pieces. So as you talk about this protocol needs to be followed, we've already written those pieces down so that as we do publish those pieces, it'll all be in that handbook from these analyses.
Okay, thank you. That, that's all the questions.
Mr. Christian, thank you so much for your questions. I want to remind the board, I know it's hard. But we have to get through this item. Um, and we're only halfway through with the questions. And if you want to do another round, and then remember after that, we're going to talk about the survey. So all we're doing by making all these comments when we're supposed to be asking questions is just reducing the amount of time we have later to get through this, uh, which means you won't have as much time to talk about the survey, for example. You won't have time to get through a second round. So you're really just cutting yourselves off by not sticking to the questions. So that said, uh, we are moving on to, uh, trustee area four, which is Gonzales Hoy.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your presentation. Uh, my first question is, I'm not sure if it's from Mr. Freeze. Uh, how many classrooms do we have left that still need to get Murph 13 filters installed?
So the Murph filters, the Murph 13 filters, we're actually in the process of installing them early. Earlier during the pandemic, we'd actually changed all the filters out across the different to Murph eights. Um, and so maintenance is now in the process of upgrading to Murph 13. It's been several months, it's just the, the process of the cycle we're going through. So, um, we do have several sites, many sites actually that need to be done. But this process goes relatively fast and we'll be able to move through that list.
Okay, thank you. Um, next question is, um, have we identified a room at every site that will be utilized, um, to maintain students who show symptoms during the day or to go to in case that happens?
I'll turn that over to Tony, but I believe that would be part of the school, um, opening, uh, guidelines that they would have to adopt and how they would handle that on a particular day.
Yeah, so we know that there will be a, for no better term, an isolation room that will be identified. I couldn't give you a list of it's room 18 at this site, it's room 23 at that site. Other than each site will have one identified as we come back. And part of it is as we define what type of program we're going to hire that will dictate what is the best room to protect everybody by putting it the farthest away from others.
Okay, thank you. Um, my next question is, um, have sped classes been, sped classrooms been taken into consideration and potentially assigned new places because of their sizes? They're usually smaller, right? So I don't want to put too much comment because I'm looking at President Phillips, but they're usually smaller. So have we considered moving them to larger spaces and identifying those as sped classrooms?
So we've been in contact with, uh, Christian Hardy, um, on cabinet. And so we have had some discussions. We have not finalized any plans, but we do know that sped classrooms will have to be handled differently than a traditional classroom. And so it is something we're looking into.
Okay, thank you. Uh, my last question is, uh, I made this for Kenan. Does the risk assessment take in consideration at all lack of staffing that can address infection spread?
I think the overall plan that has been discussed today is specifically on the, the science behind, um, the analysis. Uh, from a, uh, perspective of, uh, staffing, I think that, uh, that should, could be taken into consideration from a risk assessment. Um, but what has already been described today and talked about if that the thought of disinfecting as much as we were in prior to the results we see today, that it can be done effectively with, you know, um, an approach that, that meets those goals of the district.
Thank you for that. That's my last question, President Phillips.
Thank you, sir. Um, Mrs. Reckler?
Yes, thank you. Thank you so much for your presentation and thank you for being here. Um, my first question, I think is going to be for staff and that is, have we discussed or obtained buy-in or are we in the process of obtaining buy-in from our teachers and other unions in the assessment of the plan?
So a lot of this we are working through, depending on the unit, we're working through different pieces. We have not formally negotiated the classroom looks like this, that the classroom looks like that. What we have done is begun the process of readying the classrooms, which is within the district's right to make sure that they're safe. And then we would then work with the teachers and other staff to go over all the protocols as part of our safety plan to make sure that everyone's following those practices.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, the next question I believe is also probably going to be for staff, which is, so it sounds like we're targeting a 14 to one. So, um, have other elements of the return to school plan, are they being synced up with a 14 to one? Any?
I can also speak to that. Um, so, I mean, right now when we're, we're thinking about this, we are thinking about the fall. And so we're in master schedule building time. So we have to work with all our, uh, secondary sites to, especially secondary sites that have bigger numbers, um, to think through master schedules that are going to enable us to do that kind of work. So it's all part of the planning for the fall. If we end up going back earlier, then we're going to have to think about that, um, sooner. But it is all synced into the sort of budget development, FTE allocation work that we do through the spring to get ready for the fall.
Okay, thank you. And then the final question is, um, how are we paying for this? And what pot of money? And are we over or under budget? And maybe we put this in the budget committee, but can, would you?
So I'll, I'll answer to, there is no defined budget. We have been able to utilize the one-time CARES Act funds to buy all of the facility equipment that we've needed to do to temporarily mitigate the issue. We cannot fix a lack of windows with one-time monies short-term. That is something that needs to be prioritized permanently to fix. And that's a different dollar amount, but what we are doing is creating mitigations where you can leave the door open. Again, not a long-term solution because that goes counter to our active shooter and our other trainings about site securities. But we can do that temporarily. We have met and been able to spend well over a million dollars on PPE and other facility modifications. And we're, we have the funds within our CARES Act to do that. As we get into the other aspects, do we want to change staffing? Do we want to change something else? That's a different conversation. I do believe that would be appropriate for the budget committee to start because those are much different choices as we deal with our finances.
Thank you very much. And I just want people to remember when they ask multiple questions at one time, they're taking somebody else's question time. Okay, so we need to respect each other. So we all have an opportunity to ask questions. I have four questions. Uh, the first question is, please describe to me what lunch will look like, uh, in these facilities.
Very challenging.
Yeah. Well, we have to, it really all, it depends a lot on sort of how we go back. I mean, if we go back in a hybrid model, which is what most districts have gone back into, there's usually, uh, some type of grab and go lunch. Students are not sitting down for lunch. So they're either getting it on the front end or the back end. If it's, sorry, if they go, there's the hybrid model where you could go morning and afternoon. Uh, and then there's the lunch in the middle or there's, you know, a couple of days a week. But, um, what we've seen in most places that have done anything in terms of return, it's a grab and go, um, lunch. So there's not congregation. We would obviously be working towards the wider use. And we would probably, you know, if students grab and go, they'd be sitting outside, um, most of the time. So that's where we've landed in the short term, um, while we think about, you know, the wider return of everybody at one time.
Thank you. Describe to me what restrooms look like. When we come back. Don't keep making me laugh.
So I would be best to respond. So in the restrooms, we have to maintain the social distancing, uh, at six feet. And so what we're doing is evaluating the restrooms to make sure that while we may have capacity with additional stalls, we also have to make sure that we don't put people within closer areas than that. So we have identified, uh, the kind of common restrooms for the boys and the girls. And typically we'll see two sinks there and we can maintain the social distancing, uh, while they're doing the hand washing. And so while we may have seating capacity, we don't have hand washing capacity. So what we're doing is we're going to limit that, that capacity in those areas where we have six foot spacing at the sink. So, uh, potentially that could be two people, um, in a restroom at a time, uh, as long as they're spacing while they're washing their hands.
And we're putting signage up that will actually identify the new capacity.
That is correct.
And one thing to, to keep in mind as well is that those, those types of spaces are, are kind of transient spaces, right? We, we don't have a lot of close contact in those spaces, hopefully. Um, so, you know, current, uh, definition is 15 minutes within six feet. Usually see those kind of conditions in the bathroom. It's more people passing, kind of like a hallway.
Thank you. My third question is, what is the long-term solution for Richmond High School?
Long-term solution, um, we're going to look to some experts to help us out in the area. But, uh, it is going to be a modernization of some sort to improve ventilation within that facility. If that is, uh, the course of action we go.
I mean, another way to say that is a long-term solution is not to have a school where the majority of classrooms don't have windows. Um, so that we have to do something about that. And we know that's how that was built and Kennedy was built that way. And at the time it was seen as, you know, and architecturally and, uh, you know, design that was smart and effective. But we know now that it's a big factor. Um, so that, that is what we would have to prioritize. And we know that's not every classroom at those two schools, but a, a good amount. And so the long-term solution is going to be, have to figure out how to create classrooms with strong ventilation, which to me, and I think to our team, is going to mean some type of windows and natural air that comes in and out.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry, go ahead. I'm listening.
Yeah, I was just going to, I was just going to add, and through our prioritization committee, as we look at facilities and the criteria that may move facilities within the modernization and span for major R, it is one of the criteria that are just depending on how that gets weighed would actually affect how that campus may turn out, um, in the rebuild process.
And so just to finish, that's why it was so critical that we did have the prioritization committee because factors change. Five years ago, the factors were not the same as today. And that's why we have to revisit each of our facilities to make sure we're identifying the right needs.
Thank you very much. My final question is, what is the long-term solution for Kennedy High School?
Just say ditto to the, to the last statements I made, that the, the two main buildings, not the science wing, need to be rebuilt, uh, with classrooms that have windows.
Thank you very much. That, uh, those are my four questions. Board members, we still have the survey, uh, to do. I know this is important because we're talking about our facilities. We're going to, we're going to try to do two more questions for each one of you. Please do not start making comments because if we do, I'm going to cut the survey conversation. Um, and we need to have both conversations. So, uh, trustee Smith Folds.
Who monitors the isolation room?
We will have to make sure as part of our reopening protocol, there will be staff that have that assignment in a safe manner.
How many schools are in green right now?
The green is a major, uh, occupancy and I'll let, uh, Malik speak to that. So when we talk about classrooms, and I think I mentioned it earlier, the orange is where we typically are going to find our classrooms. It's the green areas that we're going to see are more office space where it's one to one person.
Yeah, just added that. So so the range is between two point five and slightly less than three. And so if you go to like, I'll give an example of Bayview Elementary, for example. This is a class, this is a school where you have operable windows, you have adequate ventilation, and you have enough space to distance students. So you are on the lower part of this range. Kennedy and Richmond, on the other hand, where you don't have windows, this is on the upper side of the range. Actually, it bypasses three point oh. And and we've we've talked about the required mitigations to make sure that we bring down the the structure strange.
So no classroom can be green because we don't have a classroom with just one person in it.
Right.
So no classroom can be green, you're looking for orange and yellow. All right, I'm done, Miss, I'm finished, Mr. Phillips.
Thank you, ma'am. Trustee Christian, up to two questions.
Yes, no further questions.
Thank you, sir. Trustee Gonzalez Hoi, up to two questions.
Thank you. I only have one question. Dr. World, are we going to be doing walkthroughs with each site leader to ensure the six-feet rule is maintained in every classroom?
Yes, we believe that's essential, that we're going to have not only facilities but safety. Walk through each of those, make sure that all questions are answered for the site leaders. And our educators that come back will create actual protocols to make sure that they're trained.
Thank you. Thank you, President Phillips.
Thank you so much, sir. Trustee Reckler, up to two questions.
Thank you. For furniture that's not being used and soft furniture, it's all going to be stored on site?
So I think to answer that question, the furniture in the classroom, so if you look at the layout that Dr. Wolf had shown in the presentation, we are trying to maintain the classroom furniture within the classroom, but by grouping the desks together where there are desks and having one desk that would be occupied, a desk is vacant, then another desk, and they're kind of being put in rows. And there are sites that have different configurations, but the idea is trying to maintain furniture within the classrooms because we do not have locations to store software to come out, where you have the walk-in office rooms and stages, other locations where carpets have been rolled up and stored already.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you very much, trustee Reckler. When the final scores are done and they're made available, will they be made available to the public at large? How will that be put out?
They'll be made available on the district website.
I have no further questions. I want to thank you all for this presentation. I think it was very informative and I think you answered a lot of questions that people have have had. So that said, we have one more item, or it's not really an item, but one more part of this presentation that we're going to deal with. And that is the survey. Board, it's eight fifty, do you want to take five minutes before we go to the survey? Okay, I saw Mr. Gonzalez Hoi, can I have a motion, sir, for a five-minute recess?
Yeah, I moved that we have a five-minute recess.
Second.
Okay, thank you so much. It's been properly moved and seconded. And Smith Folds.
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Gonzalez Hoi?
Yes.
Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Phillips, yes, so we're gonna come back at, I'm gonna cheat because the time's gonna change. We're gonna come back at eight fifty-six, okay? All right, see you in a minute. Thank you. All right, we have one more beautiful face that we're waiting for.
I see all board members, who are we waiting for, President Phillips?
Oh, you know what? I need to adjust my screen because ah, there's Mr. Christian's beautiful face. I didn't see him in my original screen. Thank you so much. All right, so we're moving on to the last part of tonight's presentation, which is the school survey. Mr. Duffy?
Yep. Thank you, trustee Phillips and all of our other trustees for really being great listeners tonight and really good questions that you all have asked. So the return to the school survey is just another piece of data that we wanted to collect and be able to share back with the board and the community. We can go to our next slide. So we started the survey on December sixteenth. We launched it through Thought Exchange. And just a note that we do have a representative from Thought Exchange this evening. If there's some really technical questions about the tool. And we just wanted to get a really sort of simple pulse check of where community was about reopening. So we heard from representatives from all fifty-four schools, and I'll talk about who we heard from, and more than six thousand families taking part. And the exchange question, and if you know Exchange, which is the tool that we've been using, it allows us to ask some very closed-ended questions, but it also does ask us, allows us to ask an open-ended question, which people then can comment on other responses. So what do we need to consider to make sure you and your student feel safe and supported as we plan for an eventual return to the classroom? So this is important that I want to share. So we we launched the survey before the release of the vaccine and legislation that was introduced to possibly reopen schools in March. So a number of things came sort of after this survey, including new reopening guidance from the state, both about what we need to do to be able to be in the red, which is when schools are allowed to reopen. So I very much understand community concern, community comments, that some of the questions didn't perfectly align with some of the state frameworks. And I think that was really just a question of timing. We also had a board turnover, and this board has been really interested in doing study sessions. And so that has also been another place where we've been able to share information with community. So that has also been raised as like, hey, why not do the survey after these? And this was something that, you know, we had wanted to get going and really see where folks were as we were heading into a winter potentially upsurge. So that's a little bit about, you know, how it came to be. We understand it's not a perfect survey in any way, but just wanted to make sure we got some input from our community about where we were. And also, you know, knowing that we might have to do another survey, especially when we're returning to really actually get confirmation from folks if they want to return. And even we heard from our first presenters, even when districts have done that, almost half of the folks who say they're going to return don't return. So we know these things are very fluid. We can go to our next slide. So there you see the participants' thoughts and ratings. Go to our next slide. There you see the folks that took part in this. Go to our next slide. And so what you do see here is that this demographic is not a perfect sampling size of our perfect sample, representative sample of our community, right? For example, we have more than fifty percent Hispanic or Latinx folks in our community. We don't see that in the survey. We have more than fifteen percent Black or African-American. We don't see that in the survey. We do see more white representation in our survey. So totally recognize that. Let's go to our next one. We see a little less than our percentage of English learners, we're about thirty percent, a little less than thirty percent. So we see about twenty-four percent representation. We actually see more representation in the survey than in the district on students with IEPs. So eighteen percent there, I think we're at about fifteen or so in the district. Families in transition, where that's almost the same, three percent or so, two and a half to three percent in the district. And foster care is actually very close to the same. So that's actually pretty good sampling. So this was the big question that we asked. We said, would you consider sending your child to in-person school? We're trying to get a sense of where people were around coming back to in-person school this school year. And so we 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 asked on this spectrum from yes to no of and and undecided with a bunch of conditions for the yes. If the vaccine's available, only if the majority in the county, only if we're an orange, only if we're in yellow, only if my child could attend every day, not in a hybrid model. So we tried to, you know, ask that spectrum and get a sense of where people were. And you can see that it's really varies in the responses, right? So, you know, you have half of the people saying yes or yes with a condition. You have a third of the folks saying no, and another, you know, fourteen percent undecided. We also asked, you know, would you send your student back if they had to go to a different school? If we only opened a certain set of schools? The majority of folks here said no. We also asked, would you send your student back if they were with a different teacher, but in their current school? This was majority no, but less than the different school. So we know that homeschool is important to our families. This was just sort of a word cloud of things that came up in the narrative answers that are part of the thoughts that get rated. So then we'll take you into that for a minute. So as you know, people share thoughts, then those thoughts get rated by others. And these were the top rated thoughts across the board that you can see. Safety for teachers and staff, making the vaccines available, giving families choice, wanting notification immediately if possible exposure, required masks. Then there were themes, and you can actually dig even deeper into these themes and find out more of what folks have said. We just show you the themes across the board, you know, safety being the top one there, but all fairly close. Yeah, we can keep going. And then the other slides, I won't read them all out. You see some of the top ratings around safety in the theme. We can go to the next one. The themes around health protocols and what resonated the most for folks. The themes of safety of staff, students and families. And then I'm going to ask Mr. Jordan to hop in for a quick second and share a little bit about what this common ground means as we try to take two sides of the argument and see where there's common ground for us to learn.
He's muted.
Oh, you may be muted, Mr. Jordan.
Got a lab zone, sorry about that. What I said was that one of the things we really love about Thought Exchange is that it differs from like your typical Google form because you have the ability to ask these open-ended questions that allow people to kind of share their thoughts, but then also rate the thoughts, right? And then what Thought Exchange does is it takes what people are saying, common themes, puts them together, puts them, you know, in a site A, which we have here, and a site B. But then it But then it also puts it in like, what do they agree on? What are they hitting on the same points? And I think that's super helpful for this, you know, the common ground was again on safety protocols, masks, sanitizers, again, mask wearing. So the rest of these next, I think it's three slides, kind of show the different common ground people had around specific themes and topics. And again, safety is priority. I think that's really valuable, you know, like Mr. Duffy, Superintendent Duffy said, you know, we kind of got caught in a pickle when we released it and some things happened. You know, that didn't kind of reflect the full picture, right? But what does help is these commonalities, like what, what are on people's minds? And I think a lot of these were addressed tonight, you know, by the folks from Harvard, by the facilities crew. So I think that's super helpful and a valuable aspect of this Thought Exchange tool.
Thanks, Mr. Jordan. And that's really it. You know, it wasn't meant to be a massively cumbersome survey just to sort of, you know, get a pulse check. And again, this is a piece of data for us as we continue to collect data about how we get back to schools. And I'll just, I'll stop there. I know we've been at this for a while, but happy to take questions that I can answer or we might be able to answer.
Thank you so much, Mr. Duffy. So four questions apiece. This will be interesting. How many questions can you ask about a survey? But Mrs. Smith Foltz.
When will the staff be surveyed?
We haven't decided on that yet. So I think that's something, you know, now with the full board transition, we want to work with the board and obviously want to work with our bargaining units to get those questions right and, and, you know, figure that out. I think we can survey the staff really at any point. I think we just have to land on the very specific questions that we want to ask them.
Okay, thank you. Um, let's see. How many teachers do you know that are high risk? How many teachers are high risk?
I don't have that information. I may be able to pull up while we're still here. Some of our teachers that are over 75, which is considered a high-risk category, but in terms of like medical conditions, et cetera, I don't have that in front of me. I think there is a statistic collected from our UTR partners that showed somewhere near 50% of our teachers faced some type of risk category, but I don't have that broken down by age or multifamily or condition, et cetera. But I know it was fairly high.
What policy or procedure do you have in place to make sure that you're hitting those people that are not taking the survey, since the survey is not representative?
Yeah, well, so this, this survey is closed. I mean, we worked really, really hard to get this out, to ask our community to mobilize. We obviously did see some of the El Cerrito community show up the strongest in this survey, you know. So if we do another survey, we've just got to continue to use all our community resources. And it depends what kind of survey. I mean, if it's a mandatory survey, like we need to know if you're coming back to school because we're opening. I think that will be very different than, you know, something that says we need to sort of know your general thoughts. And again, very open to suggestions about how to further get, you know, more community thinking around the return to school.
Thank you. I'm just doing three.
Thank you so much, ma'am. We're going to move on to Mr. Christian in area two.
Thank you, President Phillips. Just one question. So the, the survey. So it was basically broken up into the districts. The information that was gathered.
We didn't break it up by area. So that's a, that's a good question. Like, I don't know if that's the exact question you're asking, but we didn't say which area are you part of. But we did ask, as you saw in the early slides, what school does your child go to? So we have the data that shows, you know, every single school that people chose from. So we do have that. And then obviously the types of students, race, ethnicity, English learner. And as I said, we were a little more overrepresented in the survey respondents from the El Cerrito schools than the other parts of the district. So I hope that answers your question.
Yes, that's it. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Mr. Christian. That brings us to Mr. Gonzalez Hoi.
Thank you. I only have one question. Mr. Duffy, have you got any new indication or information from our county health officers about when the vaccination might be available for our staff and for our community?
I was in a meeting last Monday where the health officer said he thought they could get to educators in four weeks. They had moved into the, from the plus 75 tier into the plus 64 tier. And we're hoping that they could reach educators in four weeks. But there hasn't, from my understanding, still been a formal elevation of educators into priority one B. I know something just came out from Alameda County earlier this evening about that. So that was the latest I heard was four weeks. And I know there continues to be lots of information swirling.
Mr. Gonzalez Hoi, just really quickly, so you know, we are trying to bring an update on the vaccine issue to the next board meeting on the 10th. So hopefully we'll have more information for you at that time.
And I do have confirmation on that. John Muir Health will be coming to present to us on the 10th and will be able to speak about vaccinations and, you know, community vaccinations. So hopefully we'll, you know, get a good bunch of information there too.
That's great. Thank you.
Is do you, is that your only question, Mr. Gonzalez Hoi?
It is. I know, surprising, but you said it's only one.
So next, Mrs. Reckler.
No questions on the survey. Thank you.
I don't have any questions on the survey either. So thank you very much for this long, very long presentation that we have gotten this evening. This is me signaling for people to raise their hand in public comment. I'm just going to ramble for like 20 seconds. So you have time to raise it if you haven't. But we are very, very, very shortly going to move to public comment. So please raise your hand before the item starts. Right now we have 11 hands raised. I see 12. Does anybody else want to raise their hand before the item starts? 14. All right. 14. Okay. Mr., who's doing this tonight? The public comment monitor person.
Well, I think I can take it tonight, since nobody jumped in. So the first public comment, well, actually I can't because I'm not a host. So it'll have to be Mr. Aurelio.
Oh, I got this. Don't worry. We can do this. If someone could do, are we doing 90 seconds there? Someone want to put up the clock?
We're doing the standard.
Standard time. Okay. So our first speaker is Carrie Schulman. Carrie, you can unmute.
Hello, everyone. I have a kindergartner and second grader in the district. I realize that there are, there's a lot of uncertainty right now and you may be hesitant to share plans about before, about stuff before anything is concrete. However, we're becoming increasingly anxious about the plans for the remainder of this school year and next school year. Please do everything in your power to be as transparent as possible in your planning process. We understand that plans might change, but it would just be so helpful if you could communicate things where, communicate where things are headed. Superintendent Duffy, I ask that you urgently make a reopening plan that focuses on just the overall guidelines that each school should follow. And that specific detail should be left to individual school sites. And then it's critical that you give individual schools a reasonable amount of time to develop and prepare their site-specific so that we can safely return to school. School board, I ask you to hold our superintendent accountable for quickly creating this reopening plan. Please create a specific timeline for when this plan needs to be created. And if this is not accomplished, I ask that you look for an interim superintendent for the last half of this school year. For any leaders of the Richmond Teacher Union who are listening, I ask that you please check your data sources before distributing information. Unfortunately, Trump has made the spread of misinformation and distrust of science commonplace in America. Please do not perpetuate this trend. For parents and teachers listening, I ask that you only look at information from credible news sources. If you hear about a teacher or kid getting sick, check if the transmission actually occurred within a school or if it came from outside the school. Also check what precautions were in place in that school. Many schools that have demographics similar to ours have been able to safely reopen. The experts tonight all agreed that we can safely reopen schools. Everyone, I ask that we all work together to make a realistic reopening plan. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ernesto Falcon. Ernesto, you can unmute and begin your comment.
Hey, thank you. I, I, my name is Ernesto and one sec, just mute yours. And I'm Ernesto and I am a father of a kindergarten student at Madera. And, you know, once again, I really do appreciate the opportunity to learn at, in depth of all of the things that will work to keep my kids safe, to keep the teachers safe. It's, it seems we have the materials and knowledge here in place to begin the plans of, of how we can, you know, up, update the schools to do this safely. And I really hope you folks in the decision-making process understand that. And it's really time to, you know, buck, you know, really pull up our sleeves and plan out. How do we open these schools? You know, I don't, I don't think we're there yet. And I think that's unfortunate because I think the data, the data and the science is there. It has been there. It's very thorough and, you know, quite frankly, more and more studies keep coming out indicating that it is safe to do it as long, you know, so long as we have strict adherence to these safety rules. You know, I worry about my kid's first grade, you know, that's the fall and I don't have confidence right now that he will have a school to go to. And I think that's tragic because education is everything. It's, it's the means of advancement. It's the reason my family has been successful. It's the reason my parents have been successful. And if he doesn't have access to his schools, I just, it is, it is saddening to think that may be the result and I hope you work through it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kelly Hardy. You may unmute.
Hello, thank you. My kid is in third grade. I'm really grateful for the updates during this meeting. I want to address two points. Today, the West Country Costa Safe Open Schools Group sent the board and the superintendent a letter that now has nearly 500 signatures from parents, caregivers, teachers, staff, students and other community members urging implementation of a comprehensive plan for reopening as soon as possible. The facilities readiness assessment that was presented is really exciting and I heard a lot of progress tonight, but it's also not enough. It's one piece of the puzzle. Our group stands by, ready to help however we can. We need to all pull together on this to make sure that it's safe for teachers and kids and staff. My second point, we need accurate and transparent information to build trust in the community as we heard from Dr. Levin earlier. I've seen in several news sources this week, individuals stating misleading, partial information about the parent survey. And I very much appreciate the district slides that Mr. Duffy just presented showing the full results and the context for the survey that it was done in mid-December to mid-January. There were no controls to ensure that it was actually parents or caregivers responding. Even so, as he mentioned, at least 50% of respondents said they wanted to send their kids back this year under specified different conditions. Also, in this meeting, it was stated that San Pablo is at 1,566 cases per 100,000, but that's not true according to the contracaster.
Okay, thank, thank you. Our next speaker is Sharon Rosi.
Hi, thank you, everyone. I want to say I'm really appreciative for this meeting. I thought that the experts provided wonderful detailed information that was very clear and helped give me a sense of comfort about where things were headed. And I hope the district and the board has taken those points that they have raised to heart and understand that the science is there that says we can safely have our kids back to school. I was very concerned to hear that we may not be having our kids back to school until fall. And I think it is incumbent on this district to open up schools for TK through three in the spring. And above all else, they need to be providing in-person services for those who have IEPs. I do not understand why my son, who has one-on-one OT over Zoom, cannot have one-on-one OT in person with a mask on socially distanced. The MOU that was set was overly restrictive as in terms of what is required to have kids back at school. The science supports that you do not have to have such strict rules about opening schools. The MOU also allows it to be changed now that we know more. The MOU should be changed and you should get kids back to school K through three this spring and IEP services instituted in person immediately. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Katie Rodriguez. Katie, you can unmute.
Good evening, board members. My name is Katie Rodriguez and I'm the parent of a kindergartner in the district. My son's teacher is working very hard, but she cannot recreate kindergarten via Zoom and seesaw. There is minimal interaction with either his teacher or his classmates, and that's very lonely for a six-year-old. My son asks every single day when he can go back to school. I appreciate hearing the planning the district has done to prepare for school reopening. But after almost a year of schools being closed, I find it frustrating that this is the first time we've heard any significant planning for reopening. We need more transparency and a clear timeline for when schools will reopen so everyone can prepare. Parents and family members stand ready to be partners in this preparation, but we can't do it if we don't have any information about how we can engage with our schools and help get our kids and teachers back safely. The science tells us we can safely reopen our schools with the right precautions in place. And there is significant state and federal funding on the table beyond the CARES Act money that was mentioned today. You know, just today FEMA said they would fund schools going back 100% through the end of the pandemic. There's significant funding on the table and we really need to have our plans in place to take advantage of it. So all of our students can go back in a safe fashion. Thank you very much for your time.
Our next speaker is Maya Bazianic. Bazianic, sorry if I mess up your last name.
No worries. Thank you. My name is Maya Bazianic and I am the parent of a sixth grader. I really just wanted to thank you for the presentation tonight. It was very informative and helpful. It has been problematic, kind of the lack of communication from the district in what has been happening planning-wise. And I think that unfortunately, this has led to, you know, tension and stress and potentially pitting parents against teachers in terms of, you know, what people's views and expectations are. So I just really want to encourage the district and the board to be really clear about a timeline and the plans that are being made. Tonight was a great start. I would like to see a little more specificity on what the expectation is moving forward in terms of timing. And, and I would encourage the district to work with the teachers' union to build that trust that was discussed earlier because I think that is very important. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jennifer Peck. Jennifer, you can unmute.
Thank you. I'm a parent of a high school student in the district and I also really appreciated hearing from the experts tonight and Thank you. Um, I'm a parent of a high school student in the district and I also really appreciated hearing from the experts tonight and also heard a really clear opinion that it's safe to reopen if the right protocols are in place and Dr. Silva was absolutely right in her comments as a number of other parents have pointed out about the critical importance of trust and transparency. And and that when you don't have that, none of this reopening is going to work. And again, as a number of other parents have pointed out, it's a huge challenge that we have here and communication absolutely has to become much more consistent. I think you cannot overcomplicate in a situation like this and our district has undercommunicated. Um, I just want to give a quick example of something that happened tonight that is damaging to trust transparency when Mr. Duffy was talking about um, fall still being the target for all of this planning, but then alluded to the possibility of opening in the spring if things change and and which is it? Is there now an option of opening in the spring? We heard from the health officer in the last study session that the way the MOU is written, it's not even a possibility. So I'd like to know, all of us would like to know in the next meeting, is the district going to revisit this to make spring opening a possibility? Those of us who are trying to make decisions about what to do for school for our kids really need to know. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Gillian Banks Kong. You can unmute.
Um, thank you, everybody, for tonight's meeting. This was, this was really great. Um, I had a prepared statement, but a lot of things were covered. I'm going to try to sort of cut and paste as I go here. So, um, I'm a parent of an eighth and a 10th grader who used to be enthusiastic learners who loved school. They tell me now every day that they're depressed and they hate school, they hate learning and that life has no point. Uh, my older child has thoughts of suicide and my younger child has social anxiety and is incredibly lonely. She told me three times today that she thought she was dying. Based on the vehement opposition I have heard from the teachers, I have felt hopeless that any children, let alone middle and high schoolers, will go back to school this year. And I am now terrified that they may not even go back to school next fall. As we have seen tonight and other nights, there is ever increasing evidence from science showing us that we can go back to school and make it safe regardless of the community. Teachers are very scared, but I feel utterly helpless. The teachers seem to hold all the power. This has become a teachers versus parent situation that nobody wants. There's so much anger on both sides and that's not a good place to teach or learn from. We're a community and we should be supporting each other. I thank you for all the information and it's finally clear that you are working on a plan. Item number 44 of the MOU clearly allows for review and changes as necessary. So I ask, what are you going to do to make sure that teachers trust and feel safe and want to come back too? So that this plan can elevate everyone instead of leaving everyone behind, which is what is happening now. Thank you.
Our next speaker, Kim Sargentini, you can unmute.
Yes, thank you. Um, this is Kim Sargentini, a parent and teacher. I also am going to cut and paste a little bit based on what I heard tonight. Um, I felt like Mr. Christian had a real focus on like the facilities and the procedures and that's sort of my focus as well. Like, I'm curious about the nurse issue. Are we going to get nurse assistance? I don't feel that secretaries or teachers can do the job that needs to be done for like the screening of the health issues. I'm concerned about the kids drinking water in kindergarten. They drink all day. Do we have procedures? Will they step outside? I don't know how that's going to happen. Dismissal, we often have large amounts of children outside at dismissal time congregated. I don't know. Again, it just seems like there's a lot of things to think through. I didn't hear them speak about portables tonight. I'm wondering if portable buildings are any different than regular buildings or not because a lot of our schools have portables. Another issue is children with special needs. In TK and kindergarten, we often don't have them identified yet. Um, and then also they spoke to classrooms, but a lot of us have schools with inclusion where students with special needs are either mainstreamed or included. So I do feel there's a lot to think about, even if we're going to use outdoor space, adding benches and covers. So we can adequately space as our benches now have kids that sit really tightly. Um, those are my main things. I think also contact tracing since the county health officer said we didn't have a lot of compliance. Thank you so much for the session tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Aurelio. Before you go, before you go to the next speaker, um, I'm just gonna ask, uh, the board if you could all just kind of give me a nod. Uh, what I want to do is extend the public comment, uh, through the last person who's there. I just want to give people like the two more seconds. Raise your hand, raise your hand, raise your hand. Um, the last time I looked, Colleen Ballantyne was the last one. If somebody wants to jump on behind this, uh, Valentine, please do it now. Nobody's up. Frank Han just jumped on. So board, I'm asking, oh, and Maria Newton. So whoever is the last person, uh, when you all give me permission to extend, uh, I want to extend through that last person. And Mr. Aurelio, please keep track of who the last person is. Board, is that okay with you all?
President Phillips, that's okay with me. Do you want a motion?
No, it's not necessary. Um, but thank you. Um, so we're extending through that last person for public comment. Uh, Mr. Aurelio, who is that?
Maria Newton.
Maria Newton.
We just, unless you want me to count the one that just jumped in when you asked me.
Get Ursula Rodriguez and that's the last person.
Got it. All right. So up next, TJ Warfield. You may unmute. Begin your comment.
Thank you. Um, earlier in the session, Mr. Phillips, you had asked if sessions like this help build trust. And it is exactly sessions like this that help build trust. These three presentations were were great. The, I think having Dr. Silva, um, within that Harvard group, um, and all of the Harvard's speakers say, you know, trust is number one, trust is key and trust is the biggest challenge that you're going to have. And having Dr. Silver's Silva say that, yes, there's policy, yes, there's facilities, yes, there's science, but there is a real human element to this. There's fear, there's anxiety. Those are real, those are valid and need to be addressed. Um, and having the past, um, failures be acknowledged, be, um, transparent as much as possible. I think is very important and I think her saying those things was extremely important. Um, I think the last session broke a lot of that trust because all of the the speakers seemed to be um, pre-prepped to speak to a very particular point. All three sessions in this particular study session were, um, unbiased, amazing. Um, so thank you for the session. Next session, please keep that up. Um, and I had another point and I forgot it, so I will stop here, but thank you.
Our next speaker, Jose Delia, you may unmute and begin your comment.
Uh, board members, Superintendent Duffy, uh, thank you for continuing this conversation. Uh, it sounds that we have, we're at the starting stage of this conversation. There's many more conversations to be had in order to create a safe place, not only for our students, but also for the staff that's on campus. Uh, so the continuation, the conversation and, um, the communication that comes out is very important. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Stephanie Garcia Avila. You may unmute.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Hey. Anyways, good evening, board and staff. My name is Stephanie Garcia Avila and I'm a senior attending Richmond High School. I believe we are not yet ready to go back to in-person school. We didn't have enough resources before to stay sanitized and safe. How will we have enough resource to go back to school now? If you are really for the students, think about the decisions you are making. Also, it is unacceptable to leave public comment near the end or voices matter as much as yours. Thank you and have a great night.
Our next speaker, Tanya Garcia. You can unmute and begin your comment.
Hello, my name is Tanya Garcia. I'm a senior at Richmond High. I wanted to say that opening up the schools can cause an increase in the possibilities to catch the virus. Even if we take all these precautions, ask yourself if you want to risk worsening the situation that we are in a state that the virus is still not controlled. There is still a huge number of cases. So we must first make sure that we have this under control and think about our students and staff and how will this affect them? Thank you.
Our next, our next speaker is Diana Buenrostro. Diana, you can unmute and begin your comment.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hello, district and staff. My name is Diana Buenrostro. I am a senior attending Richmond High School. I do not believe our district is ready to go back to school in person. My school does not have proper ventilation or windows. So you will be putting us all at risk. Our school isn't the only one who doesn't have windows or proper ventilation. Put yourself in our shoes before you make decisions. Thank you and have a great day.
Our next speaker is Marlene Guillen. Marlene, you should be able to unmute now. Marlene, are you able to unmute and begin your comment? Okay, I'm going to come back to Marlene. Um, it looks like it might be a microphone situation. Uh, so the next speaker is Sarah. I'm going to have you unmute and identify yourself. Typically, we need to have a first and last name for comments. Are you able to identify yourself, Sarah? Okay, I'm going to move on to the next one. Nico Gamache Kokol. Hopefully I said your name correctly. You can try to unmute now.
Yeah, hi. Um, it's Nico Gamash Kokol. Um, so I am both a parent of a kindergartner in this district and also a behavioral health professional. And I just really appreciate these sessions. I, I am a little confused about the comments about there not being transparency. I think in this kind of situation, like we you can't plan because things are constantly changing and shifting and new information is coming out all the time. And I think that the fact that you are opening this up and bringing in experts that are sharing with us the newest research and the newest evidence and the newest protocols is really incredibly helpful. And I just, um, want to really appreciate that and and recognize that, you know, planning is hard for everyone right now. I'm also like working with a kindergartner at home. And so I get it, it's hard. Um, but, you know, you can't plan for things you can't anticipate. And so I just really wanted to appreciate you all for your efforts and for bringing experts in that are sharing the new information as it comes out and um, just really ask everyone in these, in this district to to understand that like we can't anticipate what's happening and new strains are emerging and things you know, are going to change. And so it's really difficult to plan around. So just thank you for your efforts.
Colleen Ballantyne, you can unmute and begin your comment.
Oh, hello, Colleen Ballantyne, kindergarten, first, second grade, mild to moderate, special education, self-contained teacher. I also sit on the executive board of the union. I'm first off coming with a compliment. I highly appreciate the fact that there was an acknowledgement tonight that there are going to, there is a need for a different approach to the individual needs of special education classrooms. And I openly welcome and look forward to the dialogue that is needing to happen between the district and the teachers involved in that. Just as a soft reminder, distance learning is still kind of rocking in my classroom. Last time I talked to you guys, we were doing golf and bowling. We started virtual volleyball this week. Turns out balloons are fantastic in kindergarten. Um, other than that, I just wanted to tell you all, thank you for your time and I look so forward to future dialogue. Farewell.
Frank Han, Frank Han, you can unmute and begin your comment.
Good evening, everybody. Past couple of meetings, I've had some stuff spelled out, ready to go. I don't tonight. Um, I do want to repeat something I said last time. The big question is, what's the right thing to do here? We already know it's reopening. Otherwise, we wouldn't be trying to attain that goal. There's a quote by a man named William Arthur Ward. The mediocre teacher tells, the good teacher explains. The superior teacher demonstrates and the great teacher inspires. Down the road, a lot of these kids are going to be looking back to this time and they're going to see a whole lot of teachers that were fighting, kicking and screaming about going back to work because of their personal uh, worry about their safeguard. And a lot of people have gone back to work since all this started, myself included since day one. I'm an ER nurse. Haven't taken a day off yet. I don't know when teachers became more safeguarded than every other profession that's returned to work, especially teachers in so many other states. I'm from Florida. The teachers in Florida are back to work. Everybody's back to work. This county is just standing out. I don't know what we're, what we're doing here, but you all seem to be moving in the right direction. I just wish we could move a little bit quicker. So thanks, everybody, uh, for chiming in.
Ursula Rodriguez, you may unmute.
Hi. Hello, thank you. Um, I agree, public comment is too late. I feel like a lot of the board questions could actually just be addressed in an email to a colleague or simply looked up. Um, the first doctor said tonight, if there's a will, we have the playbook. I want to address a bit of the special education issues that have come up. I have a first grader and a fourth grader, both with invisible disabilities. Our problem at this point is not a lack, is not, uh, academic loss. It's not about they're going to be behind further. Right now, our problem is the daily hourly meltdowns of so much frustration and anger for my kids with their invisible learning disabilities. They cannot access the learning and they're so motivated, but now they absolutely hate waking up to try again. I also love the last caller, some of his comments. We have such low expectations, I feel, of teachers and of the career of teaching at this point. Everybody has to work through their fear and not see this as just a yes or no issue. There are ways to get this done. And let's look at the playbook. Thank you.
I'm going to go back to the few hands that we tried that weren't able to work. So Maria Christina Newton. You can try to unmute now. Do your comment.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm speaking as a parent and as a professional working in the district. And my concern is that I, I see that kids get injured every day and usually a lot of the students at the same time in these tiny areas in the office. So I'm concerned about that. And another question, I witnessed how many students sat at once at the bathroom. So it's another of my concerns. And tonight, um, I, I want to say I congratulate all the parents who are coming and take their time to input their, their their concern and their suggestion. And my parents let that they are more, more prone to the Rito and sadly not prone areas in contrast like the San Pablo, Richmond, El Sobrante, where the cases are still pretty high. Sadly, I had many witnesses also several of our students, but grandparents yes, passed away last week, five of them. So in our area, that case is, that case is still pretty high. So and again, I'm sad to hear that our area is still in bad shape in contrast with El Serrito and I pray all the parents are, are coming tonight. Thank you and thank you all, trustees, school board trustees and all the presenters and all the guests who were invited tonight. Thank you. I really appreciate this. Thank you.
Let me try Marlene Guillen one more time. Marlene, can you unmute now and try your comment?
Yeah. I'm sorry for the earlier inconvenience. Either ways, either ways, my name is Marlene Guillen. I am a sophomore at Richmond High School and I don't think we are ready to go back to school. I don't think it's wise to risk our health and we won't be able to practice safe social distancing with cramped hallways. Thank you. I don't think it's wise to risk our health, and we won't be able to practice safe social distancing with cramped hallways. Thank you.
And the one last hand that was raised prior was Sarah. I'm going to try her one last time. Sarah, can you identify yourself? Now, I'm going to try, there's two Saras here. I'm wondering if it's the same person. Let me just try the second one. Sarah Anzia, are you?
Yes, that's me, Sarah Anzia. Thank you. Can you hear me?
Okay, yes.
Great. I want to start by thanking Mr. Phillips for really demonstrating leadership on this issue. I have been listening for quite a while, and I'm astonished at how far behind WCCUSD is in developing a plan for returning to some form of in-person instruction. Everything I've been hearing and reading makes it clear to me that, at least for younger children, with proper distancing and masking and airflow, there are ways to bring back our youngest children safely, both for the children and for the teachers. So, and yet I still continue to hear such vehement opposition to this. And I hear claims that actually distance learning is going really well. And what I want to ask is that if that is the case, I would like to see data in support of that. If distance learning is going very well within WCCUSD, I'd like to see those data. Attendance rates, enrollment, and learning gains. I'd like to see that broken down by student race and ethnicity. I'd like to see the learning gains in the past year compared to previous years. If it's going really well, I won't press the issue, but I have seen those numbers for look good. Society is most vulnerable. About the return to school survey, thank you for doing it. I'm glad you did. I really would like to see the option of returning to in-person school when state guidelines allow, or when we're back in the red tier. We don't know how many people fall in that category because it was not asked. Thank you.
President Phillips, those are the last hands that were raised when you extended public comment.
Thank you very much, Mr. Aurelio, for doing that and being so diligent to make sure you got the people that we were missing. Thank you to everyone who called in. We do appreciate the comments. So now is the phase of the, of the presentation where we would move into board discussion. But like the first meeting, we are not doing discussion tonight. We are using this as an opportunity to learn, so we can make informed decisions. So we won't have board discussion, but that does bring us to the next item, which is see comments from the Board of Education, which is a little different. And we are starting with trustee Smith Folds. Again, we're not having discussion on what we just talked about, but if you want to thank the experts or the people or say something else, that's all in your purview. That's now.
So I'm going to do a little throwback and make a comment like I used to before I sat on the board. My name is Jamila Smith Folds, and I'm a parent of three school-aged children, two who attend district schools. I'm a teacher by profession. Thank you to all the teachers who get up and go to work every day and do their best. Thank you to all the parents, because we want the best and do the best we can for our kids. And thank you to all the students who get up every day and try to be their best. Please pay attention to the verbs that I use. We are all doing, wanting, and being our best. I am resolute in my charge to protect teachers, students, parents, and my community. I'm not righteous enough to think that I have all the answers, but I'm committed to asking the questions. This is what I know for sure. We must be unified. We must always be unified, even if we are not always uniformed. We are all walking wounded. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, for those words. We are now going to move to Mr. Christian.
Yes, thank you, President Phillips. I just want to thank everyone for participating tonight, from all the presenters, with all the information that came out. It takes everybody to work together, from the teachers, parents, staff, everybody, to bring things together and, and working towards the same come and go, to make sure that our students are safe, making sure that we do the right thing. And so it takes everybody, it takes the community at large, all of us, to push forward. And as we push forward to make sure that all of our schools are safe and sound, you know, for our teachers and students and everybody. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Christian, for those words. Mr. Gonzalez Hoi, it's your turn.
Thank you, President Phillips. I just want to thank everybody who's, who came tonight, including the presenters, parents, students, everybody who watched, Mr. Duffy and your staff, thank you. I know that adding all these study sessions adds so much work. I just want to say a thank you to you and the rest of your cabinet and staff members who are supporting us through this. You know, I just want to thank our staff too. I know that this is not perfect, what we're doing, but you know, I'm constantly amazed and hearing stories of the work that our staff is, is doing on a daily basis, whether it's a nutrition worker walking two miles to deliver food to a family that just can't simply go and get it themselves. Or whether it's the Mirabista teachers last week, putting a parade together for students to share with them how much they miss them, so they could see them once during the school year. This is not perfect. I see my wife, who's a teacher in this district, works so freaking hard every single day. And I also know parents are working so incredibly hard to provide education to their kids under these circumstances. I can't imagine seeing a student in pain right now, what they're experiencing. And everybody's in pain, everybody's hurting and trying to do whatever they can, the best they can. You know, I just want to speak to the parents who called in or the community members who called in and said bad things about some of our staff members. I believe we have some of the greatest teachers in the state, and I'm going to continue to say that and stand up for them, because they are working so hard every single day with what they are being provided. I also want to thank our administrators. They are doing so much to hold things together, keep their staff together, provide them the tools that they need to continue supporting students through this online learning. And I just want to finish by thanking our students. We know it's not perfect for you, but we want to keep you safe, and we're going to continue to learn, continue to push forward, so that you can have the best education that we can provide. That's, that's my goal. And last item, President Phillips, I would love to see if we could, at our future board meeting, get a college and career presentation, especially around CTE, added to an agenda item, so that we can hear how CTE is working during this time and how we can continue to push it, apprenticeships, career, et cetera. That would be my request. Thank you, and I appreciate all of you colleagues for, for tonight and the great questions.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Reckler.
So you really need to have trustee Gonzalez Hoi do the closeout, because he's so gracious and filled with so much gratitude that it's just impossible to top that. So I too would like to thank all the panelists and our guests for coming, beaming in. I want to thank staff, President, Mr. Duffy's staff, you, President Phillips, for the time and the effort that you put in to organize this. It was very informative. I've learned a lot, and I would like us all to continue the conversation. So thank you all. I appreciate you all.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Reckler. I'm not going to say a bunch, but what I, what I do want to say is I understand that everybody is frustrated. And I understand that people have been frustrated for quite some time. What I would ask you to do is give this board a little grace, and remember that this board was just sworn in less than two months ago. And I hope that everyone who was watching can see that this board is very serious about this issue, that this board is hungry to learn about this issue and to put itself in a position to make the decisions that are best for our community. So just remember, this didn't start on December 16th, when this board got sworn in. This started almost a year ago. And so there's catch-up that we are doing. We acknowledge that. We're not trying to hide that. But we are asking for a little grace, so we can work through this in a very methodical way, because there are a lot of moving parts, there are a lot of stakeholders, and we all need to be able to, to move along in unison to the extent possible. So please know that we're working. Please know that staff is working. I hope everybody saw that tonight. And those are my, are my comments. So the next thing is we're going to go to item D, which is the next scheduled Board of Education meeting. So we have a meeting on February 10th. We will be discussing vaccine at that meeting on the 10th. We're also slotted to discuss distance learning at that meeting as well. And then tentatively, we have two meetings, study sessions, one on the 22nd. And that's a continuation of the COVID study session. What we're going to try to do is bring in schools and facilities that have reopened to try to get some lessons learned from them and figure out how they did things and try to learn from other people who have gone before us. So that's what's going to be what we're trying to set up for you on the 22nd. And then on the 26th, the idea is to have a listening session. I just want everybody to know that it was never the intention that we were just going to listen to people from out of town, our experts, right, talk to us. We have always intended to, you know, listen to our community stakeholders as well. So there will be at least one listening session, and we're going to try to do that on the 26th. So that said, February 10th, February 22 and February 26th. And that's it. I appreciate all of you. I love you, and we are now adjourning the meeting. Good night.